The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I would like Chief Galt to introduce our oath of office.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask that you swear in Andrew Raya to the rank of Lieutenant. Andrew grew up in the city of Moline and graduated from Moline High School. Andrew is a graduate of Western Illinois University where he received a bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration. He was hired by the Moline Police Department in 2010 and spent three years on afternoon patrol. In 2013, Andrew was assigned to the Quad City Metropolitan Enforcement Group and served for three years in an undercover capacity conducting narcotics investigations. While there, he was awarded four separate times the award from the State of Illinois Directors Association for the MEGS and Task Force for his work at the Quad City Metropolitan Enforcement Group. In 2016, he was assigned to the Street Crimes Unit and also assigned to the DEA Task Force, where he worked large-scale drug conspiracy investigations. Andrew was promoted to Sergeant March in 2017 and returned to patrol duties as a supervisor. He was appointed to the Crisis Containment Team in 2017 and has executed over 70 search warrants. In April of 2018, Sergeant Raya was appointed to the community-oriented policing unit, and he was very instrumental in many of our community events, such as burgers and badges, coffee with a cop, shop with a cop, National Night Out Against Crime, and Junior Explorers. He was also awarded a departmental award in July of 2018 for all these community policing efforts that he's brought to the city of Moline. January of 2020, Andrew was appointed as the Crisis Containment Unit Tactical Commander. A tactical commander is responsible for the planning and execution of operations, as well as training, equipping, and administration of the tactical team. And in fact, he just returned this week from SWAT Command School. Lieutenant Raya will assume second shift commander, I'm sorry, third shift commander responsibilities as the Platoon Three Patrol Division Commander. He's accompanied here tonight by his wife Alyssa and his lovely daughter Olivia, his mom Gloria, and his dad Arturo, and his sisters as well. I'd like to invite Lieutenant Raya to come forward and receive the oath of office.
Please raise your hand. I, Andrew Raya.
I, Andrew.
Have been duly appointed to the rank of Lieutenant of the Police Department.
Have been duly appointed to the rank of Lieutenant of the Police Department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct applicable to police administration.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the rank of Lieutenant of the Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the rank of Lieutenant of the Police Department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to my honor to send your service cards for the rank of Lieutenant. If you're informed, I'd invite your mother, Gloria, to come up and pin on your badge.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
Congratulations. Can we invite your family forward if you want to take a photo, family photo?
Be sure you get me in that picture. Somehow being blocked by six people.
Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing, none. We're going to move forward with our work session. Tonight's focus is one of our council priorities for the year: Neighborhood Stabilization and Revitalization. Dirk Price will be leading the discussion, but it will be a more casual discussion. So if you have questions that come up throughout the presentations, please ask them. And then as we go through the different items, there'll be points of decision that the council will have to consider and move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, tonight's largely about choices that we have to make as a city council to give staff some direction. This goal has been variously described as neighborhood stabilization, or maintaining Moline is a great place to live, or at staff level, you know, stay classy Moline, all those things. And to do what the work we need to do tonight, I need to get you oriented a little bit about what we're already doing, where this fits. Because as we go through the choices you're going to make, a couple of things you're going to have to keep in mind throughout is impact on staff and staff resources and impact on budget. Because some of these are, in some ways, zero-sum choices we have to make, it can be one or not the other. So Goal Two is sent against a backdrop of the city in which the following is already going on as part of neighborhood stabilization efforts. We have property code enforcement team and prosecution both in munisies and in court. We have the rental inspection program. We have the chronic nuisance ordinance enforcement program, the abandoned housing roster, the foreclosure monitoring, and our own lean enforcement process that all lead to various forms of corrective action for property code issues. Now, that list is essentially manned here at the city of Moline by Brad Howman and Amy Saunders, and the rental property inspection's been shifted to the fire department. So that's who's doing this work now. And we've outsourced the prosecutions to John Fox, who does that work with Amy and Brad. Now, about the rental inspection thing, because that's going to come up in a couple of places tonight. The rental inspection, remember, it's multifamily, and there are some exceptions to that for owner-occupied and some things. Remember that it's a graduated frequency of inspection based upon the property's condition. So some get inspected more than others, and we've had some success moving from grade C, which is not as good as grade B or A, up the scale. So that program's working in that graduated series of inspections. And then there's the program that begins with the external look at it, and depending upon how that goes, fire can then have a basis for inspecting the interior of the properties. So that's the existing rental inspection program now, and that becomes important for a couple of things we're going to discuss a little on down the road. Again, keep an eye on who's going to do the work and how much it's going to cost us to do the work. Now, against that backdrop, we're already folding in from your directives during the budget process and at goal-setting last year, the following, a couple of other programs. I had on here the tree program, that's its nation stage. That's because, you know, it's not tree planting weather, but that's an initiative we're going to be doing to increase property values in the neighborhoods. There's a plan coming for that. Do have on here the I-74 loan program for downtown. We've already started to roll that out. Now, just by background, this is an expansion of the revolving loan fund program that's been in existence for over a decade. What you folks did was expand the revolving loan fund program to include the possibility of loans to people impacted by the I-74 bridge. And just as a way of background, the I-74 bridge is a huge benefit to the entire Moline community. But the burden of that bridge project has been unfairly concentrated upon a few specific citizens of Moline and some of those businesses. And so the idea of expanding the revolving loan fund was to allow those businesses to have the public help bear some of those burdens visited on the specific community members. It's a simplified application from other applications we've done because we want to encourage people to do it. It's already been rolled out in a couple of places, and on Thursday, Jeff Manis is taking it to the Downtown Merchants Group to talk about it some more. And I wanted to put it here for the downtown neighborhood and its stabilization to remind people that this is available and that the city of Moline's looking to help people in the downtown who have unduly borne the burden of the bridge project that's going to benefit the entire community. The third one we're implementing already is Live Stories. We're starting to get reports from that, and right now, Live Stories is focused on finance, and that's as it should be. That's the priority. But coming up behind finance, once that's rolling, will be a lot of the demographic information about the neighborhoods. We're going to be able to get some of that from our rental programs, our property inspection programs, and fold that into live reports. And then we hope to fold in the crime statistics, to the extent of what kind of crimes are being called out where. You'll see here in a minute with Chief Galt that we have in the presentation the ability to track hotspots, if you will, in the community. And Live Stories will help us to track that and to use the data to take the appropriate actions. We don't have enough dollars to go around as they are, so we need to make each one count. So against all of that backdrop and the things we're already starting to implement that you, the city council, have directed us to do, we have a few more choices to make. One of the programs that you asked us to consider as a staff and bring forward was the Crime-Free Housing Program. It's not new. It's been around the country for a couple of different places and a couple of different iterations for many years. And Chief Galt is going to come up and present this program to you. It's going to lead us to four decision points. And so to preview where we're headed with Crime-Free Housing, we're headed for these four decision points. Are we going to adopt a Crime-Free Housing Program for rentals that are already subject to the inspection process? So it would be the same subset. Are we going to add a Crime-Free Housing component to that subset? And where staff is going to recommend to you is that, yes, we do that, and it's going to lead to an earlier trigger for some more inspections under the Chronic Nuisance Program. We believe what we've got in place is a good starting point. We're not throwing it out. We're not completely reinventing the wheel. We're adding to it with the Crime-Free Housing Program. That's our recommendation, to do it that way. The second decision point for you will be whether to implement the mandatory seminar process for landlords, brokers, leasing agents. We're recommending that's yes. That's a highly educational component. That's what is required. There'll be a certificate process eventually where it's mandatory that you get the certificate at license renewal, but that would be implemented over the next year and a half, essentially, through 2021. That would be our recommendation. But we're headed there about whether or not we're going to make that seminar process mandatory and how we do it. The third decision point we're headed to for Crime-Free Housing is the lease addendum. The Crime-Free Housing Programs typically require a lease addendum that commits everybody to the process that if there's a problem with the use of the property for criminal purposes or for other triggers, that everybody understands that that's a reason that the lease has to end and things have to change. And so that language, and we do believe adding that to the lease addendum is a positive step. And that would be monitored as part of the renewal process for the license every year for the group that gets monitored now. And then last is a discussion of what the punishment would look like. Right now, we have the use of fines and munisies. That works for the Chronic Nuisance Program. In talking to Brad Howman in preparation for tonight, the Chronic Nuisance Program has been around for about six, eight years, and in that time, we've moved about eight properties through and gotten some results. There aren't a lot of them that qualify in this regard, and we don't think that there'll be that many more. There'll be some, but we have a process in place that has shown some fruits of success. There are other opportunities out there, but we believe that using the fines is one. But we'd also like to tweak the ordinance to allow us to seek, if you will, injunctive relief. That's what the lawyers would call it. It would be where we could seek mandatory additional inspections of the property randomly called over a different time period. For some properties, a fine might not be enough, and so we would want to tweak the order to allow the administrative hearing officer to impose injunctive relief that says, and that at any time in the next six months, we can do an additional inspection inside and out to look for evidence of criminal undertaking in the facility, you know, in the lease premises. So that's where we're headed. Those are the four decision points. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Galt, who will tell you more about
All right, thank you. I feel like I might be ignoring you. I'm not. It's okay. Well, tonight, we kick off the Neighborhood Stabilization Workshop, and as you know, neighborhoods that are neglected can not only bring down property values, but also significantly increase crime. So council priority goal number two, Neighborhood Stabilization and Revitalization, aims to stabilize neighborhoods that have decreased property values, deteriorating homes, or increased incidence of crime. Over 30 years ago, research suggested that addressing urban decay could decrease crime. And new research in 2018 shows that using problem-solving practices to reduce social disorder are strong and positively correlated with great results. So tonight, as Dirk alluded to, I'm proposing the Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program to target bad tenants and bad landlords in our community. The assumption, however, is that all of our tenants are good tenants and that all of our landlords are good landlords. But however, the data shows that that's not always correct, and if so, we will be able to address those problems specifically through this program supported by city ordinances. Now, a previous study done by the city shows that 88 blocks in the city of Moline have 16.2% more crime per rental unit and more rental units than city average. So there is some data that supports a correlation between some of these bad tenants, bad landlords, and increased crime and more rentals. And so we have some data to support that. And so in a couple of minutes, I'll show you some other striking maps showing crime and rental property analysis. So you may recall, in the budget workshop in 2020, I requested and was granted funding to certify staff in a Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program. So thousands of communities nationwide have implemented Crime-Free Multi-Housing in their communities, and over 50 communities in Illinois have this program. Cities such as Palatine, Bolingbrook, Schaumburg, Aurora, Naperville, just to name a few that you would recognize, have these programs in place, and they're very successful. This is a nationally utilized program that's designed to assist law enforcement agencies to significantly reduce levels of crime nuisance calls from housing projects and large rental communities. This is a unique three-phase program targeted at decreasing multi-housing crime in their communities. So I draw your attention to the screens here. It shows you the three separate phases of the Crime-Free Program. And it was developed in Mesa, Arizona, in 1992. And this program is really about education, right? And so, as you see, there's three phases. And Phase One, and the recommendation that you're going to be presenting with tonight, is that Phase One will be mandatory, that all owners or their agents managing the property are needed to attend a Crime-Free Housing Seminar, free of charge. I'm not sure why that's happening. Free of charge, that it will be put on by the Moline Police Department and the certified instructors of this program. We're going to teach several different types of skill sets in there, such as crime prevention theory, crime prevention through environmental design, physical security, lighting, landscaping, things like that, benefits of resident screening, lease agreements and eviction issues, the Crime-Free Lease Addendum that Dirk mentioned earlier, key control and master key use, ongoing security management monitoring and responding to criminal activity, gangs, drugs, and crime prevention, legal warnings, notices, and evictions, and working with the police and fire for life safety training and community awareness. That's what the basis of that Phase One educational program is designed to do: help our landlords understand how to be better landlords, prove the property, prove the property values, decrease crime, and make this a better place to live. So Phase Two and Phase Three are voluntary. And Phase Two is an onsite property inspection where one of the certified staff members will go to the property and walk through and go over various components with the landlord, such as minimum door and window unlock standards or minimum exterior lighting standards, key control procedures, or landscape maintenance, try to improve the property and the safety there. And then Three is a resident safety social event. We would encourage the apartment complex to have a little cookout, and a police officer would stop by of a community policing event, increasing engagement in our community, opening up lines of communication with the police officers. Now, again, I mentioned that Phase One is mandatory, Two and Three are voluntary. But if a landlord goes through all three phases, they would be certified as Crime-Free Housing Location, and they could erect the official gold Crime-Free logo signs at the property and brand that on their marketing materials for their rental property that they're a crime-free property. So the core of this program is education. The Police Department is prepared to train and allocate staff members from our newly-formed Crime Prevention Unit to conduct monthly crime prevention seminars, and that this is the Phase One. And if, right now, what we'd like to do, and I'll show you the timeline, is that this, all of this, even though it will be mandatory Phase One, the whole program is voluntary in the first year, and so we would start May 1st and offer, once a month, in perpetuity, we would put on these seminars. We probably could hold about 40 or so people at a time on one of those seminars, and we would get people through. So I'm estimating that this will add about three days of time to our staff members per person per year to accomplish Phase One and Phase Two, if somebody went through all phases. And that's an estimate because I don't know how many people would volunteer for Phase Two, but it would only add about one day, take one person out of the regular assignment as a rotation through these five or six people that we train to put on these seminars, monthly, and then in perpetuity annually. But that investment from our police department into our community could pay off in much bigger dividends, right? The program would allow us to address the problem, the root cause of the disorder in the neighborhood by impacting the quality of life or even property values, which we know are very important to the tax base and to our community as a whole. And it also enhances our community policing efforts. We can continue to get police officers in front of citizens in a non-law enforcement interaction, and we can provide education and improve the quality of life. And ultimately, we're trying to target and address bad behavior, address bad property maintenance or design, address bad tenants, educate landlords on management skills and active property management, and enhance communication with the Police Department. So when I asked you for the training money last year, I originally had told you that I was going to send two officers to California. And after I went to get them registered, I found out there was a national trainer in Illinois, and so I'm able to bring that national trainer here with those same training dollars and train three times as many staff members in that same training dollar. And I'm also opening it up to the other communities if they want to be a part of it and come in and learn about this program. And so that's going to be happening March 12th and 13th. Whether or not we enact anything else, we'll have the education. We can decide the nuts and bolts later, but we're going to be trained March 12th and 13th to become certified. And so we're really excited about that. So what you might ask, well, why rentals? And so I draw your attention to the screen here, and so this is a crime heat map. And don't ask me how this was made, because I didn't bring Todd Green here, but that guy's a whiz. He makes fantastic maps, and this is one of his products. But I provided him with crime data for residential properties. We got rid of all the commercial properties and, you know, Walmart, Target, all that stuff. And we're just looking at rental property, I'm sorry, crime heat map for data from 2015 to 2019. So just take a look at the circles. As you see, common sense probably tells you that the darker the color, the more crime is in that location. Okay? And so here's a pin map of rental property units. Now, this was sourced a couple of years ago with a project that was done before my time, but they began gathering the locations of rental property. It's probably part of this initiative. And you see the small dots for the one to two units and then up to 32 units at a location are bigger dots. And now you'll see on the overlay, the crime heat map over top of the rental property locations, and you probably see a striking resemblance of where the crime and where the rental properties intersect. And so I'll just back it up so everybody's kind of trying to get their mind around that. Crime, rental properties, and the overlay. And you can see that the colors represent the hotspots of crime, and it also somewhat lines up with areas that we have rental property. So now, does that mean that all those people are bad, or all those properties are bad? No. But could we do something to help this, help educate our landlords to be better? Not everyone is a lawyer, or not everyone is a professional property management person. And so some of this information might help them where they're just struggling to deal with an issue. And so there's a lot of success stories with this program. This is Gates of Deer Grove in Palatine, Illinois. This is police calls from 2005 to 2019. So they enacted this program in 2007. We saw that it went way down the first year, a little bit of spike, but then overall, after that, they reduced their issues by almost a third, or two-thirds, I'm sorry, down to about a third of the calls that they were having before. And so, I mean, not to bore you with a bunch of these charges, but a lot of these success stories are where they've rehabilitated properties and become less of a drain on police resources. So, you know, one thing I want to point out here is that the point of this program is education. And if your only tool in your toolbox is a hammer, everything looks like a nail, right? So we're not trying to just look at enhancing chronic nuisance ordinances. This isn't a hammer and nail policy, right? The solution to the problem isn't the hammer, but with the relationships with landlords, education components, inspections to improve appearance, safety, and code compliance, and then, of course, we have to have something in here of a consequence. If you're not a good participant in our community, we're going to have to do a course correction and provide some sort of a punitive or incentive for you to get better. And so here's the timeline, and Dirk had eloquently already laid this out for you in our timeline. And so, as I said, in March of 2020, we're going to start the training. We're looking at maybe starting to tweak the ordinances in April of 2020, and then May of 2020, we begin the Crime-Free Seminars. If we did one per month for eight months, we could get 320 property owners or agents in. And so we have about 520-some registered multifamily properties in Moline now. And so I went through those and filtered them out, and it comes out to about 350 unique owners or agents. Some people own one, some people own three, some people own 10. And so we need to get about 300-plus people through the program that are already licensed today. And so we can do that over the next eight months. And then January 2021, we would say, now, this is mandatory, but it's mandatory to your license renewal date. So whenever you renew, again, in 2021, then you need to comply with the certificate of the seminar. You need to provide us a copy of your lease that includes a lease addendum, and you need to have all your fees paid and all that stuff. And so by December 2021, that gives us a ton of time, right? And so that we can get all 385 agents, and that gives me 400 seats in that time period to get those people through. So, and if we needed to, we could add another one or two, no big deal. So that's the timeline. I'll invite Dirk back up if he wants to go through the legalese of the ordinance suites.
So the Crime-Free Housing Program is not without controversy. There are a number of places across the country, the Shriver Institute, for example, have brought challenges because the effects of some of these programs, depending on how they're written and how they're enforced, are seen as unduly visiting burdens upon people of poverty and people of color. And so Chief and I are aware of that, and so what we're proposing to you today is trying to learn the lessons of some of those enforcement actions and the policy matters raised by people like the Shriver Foundation to do it. And so in terms of the decision-making, the first question is, do you want to have something called a Crime-Free Housing Program Initiative in Moline? Because where that would lead would be, the first question would be the education that Chief talked about, making that mandatory for landlords and as part of the licensing process, providing that evidence. I don't, that's the kind of thing that really hasn't created a kind of disparate impact argument, the education component. So that's where we are to begin with, is do you want to have a program that starts with the education component?
Do we want to, can we make a motion so that we can start moving on?
I make a motion that we move forward with the education component to line up with the timeline. up with the timeline laid out.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Went, a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Moyer.
So just curious, how many hours would a landlord spend in a classroom?
The education component is a one-eight-hour session.
One-eight-hour session, and then what would be the penalty for not attending?
Ultimately, as we get to mandatory, it would be a license violation. And we probably talked about that later on.
There'd be a fine typically. And then if you failed for a second year, we could talk about you don't get a license. And at that point, you know, the, you would be listed as not in compliance, and we would seek conjunctive relief to say you can't rent the property.
You only have to go through the training once, once you're cert, once you've received your, you have to go through.
The level of penalty, and that's up to you too, as well, what the penalty would be. That doesn't come with an automatic.
Alderman Schoolmaker.
Are any of our neighbors participating in this? Is there anybody else in Quad Cities that does this?
Now, I did invite them to the training, so see if they...
It does seem like eight hours is a lot to ask of someone to make it a mandatory item.
Alderman Went.
To that point, Davenport does not participate in the crime-free, but they basically have the exact same thing. They have an eight-hour class that they require all landlords in, in Davenport, not only multifamily, but single-family also have to attend. They do allow, just as I think this would, that you, as the owner, if you don't want to, you can hire a management company, and if they've attended, that, that meets the, the qualification. So while, yes, Davenport doesn't do the trademarked crime-free, they have a, a program that is modeled off of the crime-free.
Alderman.
I just have, I just want a question for Chief. Phase one was mandatory, phase two and three are voluntary, right? Just for that first year? Okay. And then the...
Okay, just, they are voluntary always. Two and three are always voluntary.
Oh, two and three will always be voluntary.
Your, your benefit by going through that is when you become certified, and you can use the, the logo and post signs and use it on your marketing materials.
Can we go back to that previous screen to see where those phases were? Sorry. Okay, so ma, so phase one is mandatory, two and three are always going to be voluntary.
Right. And just to, and what might confuse you is the inspection portion of phase two. That is different from our licensing and Brad's inspection he does at the initial license offering or your current ordinance. So this is more, a little bit, I would say, less maintenance codish and more educational of, hey, you know, we could do these things to improve your property, crime prevention through environmental design, locks, things like that.
Lights. Chief, I have a question for you. What is your position on this?
I, I think it would be a great addition to the city of Moline. We're prepared, and the police department, to do this. I have people already that are assigned to, to this, and, you know, I think that they're looking forward to it. I think we feel it as a part of our community policing outreach, that we see that this would be connections, education, and again, as I mentioned before, it's a way for us to help people in a non-law enforcement mechanism. We don't take anybody to jail for this, right? We're actually providing a benefit to try to improve our community.
Alderman.
Two more questions, Mayor. It's okay. The March 12th and 13th training that you're going to have, and you said that other communities, meaning East Moline, Rock Island, so on and so forth, can come, correct?
Yeah, so I certify it through the state of Illinois, and it's being hosted through the Mobile Team Training Center. And so people, other, I have my own seats reserved because we're paying for it, but we open it up to Rock Island and so this in East Moline.
So can we charge them? Since we're, we're paying for it, correct? It came out of our, your budget. So can we charge those neighboring communities?
So, so there is a charge if it's outside of the Quad Cities, if it's not in the Mobile Team region. So if somebody came from, you know, Kew, or Korea or something like that, they, they'd be charged, and that would come off of our, of our...
Okay. One more question. Do we have any kind of tenants' training to recognize issues that they have at their... This is great for the landlords, but I ran across tenants before who, they're living under certain conditions because they don't want to say anything to their landlords because they don't want them to raise the rents on them. So is there any kind of training for our tenants to, and that might even be more, I don't know, like, sort of training that, you know, you don't necessarily need to li, live with, you know, a leaky faucet or railings that, you know, your kids could fall off or something like that?
So some of that might come out of phase three.
Okay.
Is, is if we could get everyone to, to participate in all three phases, and we can interact with those tenants and give them. But some of that's probably complaint-based. I would imagine through Brad, he might be able to say that more, but I don't know about specific classes for tenants, but I'm sure he would respond to that complaint.
There's also going to have to be an education component. We're probably going to have to do some work with communications and the website and the like about it, because certain things in this program, you know, depending on where we go with it, don't qualify. You do not want to discourage people from reporting, for example, domestic abuse. So you don't want that to count in any way as a crime under a crime-free housing, that there's deleterious effects. You want the police to come every time to the tenant to help with whatever's going on. So the program, as we go further and talk about tweak, is tweaked that way, but getting the word out that you can call for that and not worry about your tenancy, that's going to require an education component, but there's no mandatory seminars in any of the models elsewhere.
Alderman Potter.
To go further on that, and I appreciate those comments, I, I, I think part of the problem outside of the larger areas, and our code enforcement officer can probably attest to this, is that you have tenants, apparently, who need some education in terms of their responsibilities, not only their, their rights, but their responsibilities. And while I'm, I'm supportive of this, I think this is an important part of, of what we need to be heading towards, is, is, is not only rights, but responsibilities of tenants.
And that, and that may also come through adding these crime-free lease addendums that then tenants are, are signing, is for them, the education component of, you can't sell drugs here, we're going to kick you out. You know, things like that.
In, in fact, you're, you're previewing the very next section, which I even have your name on. That is enhancing our rental inspection program, but that's the next one. We've still got this one to do.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Parker.
Chief, in your slide where you had the significant decrease in crime once the program was instituted, is that, did the Deer Grove, did Palatine retain the same number of rental units, or...
Yes. It's actually a very nice place now. It's, yeah.
But they didn't, part of that isn't, you know, funny money.
Not half of it down.
Yeah. Because people just didn't want to deal with, you know.
We did that in Moline, we tore down the Oak Grove Housing Program, tore the whole metal of it. No, I understand what you're saying. That's my, not to my knowledge. And they're, they have other examples of this as well, and, and that's actually where the trainer's from, is Palatine, that's coming in March.
Okay. Second, part of this education process, is it all, you have to actually physically be there, or can some of it be electronic distance learning?
I certainly, I certainly ask that, but my understanding is that you have to be in the class.
Okay.
Alderman.
With that, so can, can, because we know that there are people who actually will buy properties that live in California, and then they run them out here, and they don't ever, we don't ever see them. Is it possible, the, the piece that Mike said, that, that Alderman Went said that Davenport does, where they add on that you'd have to send it over to a property management company?
Is that not already in? I don't think you can. Can you live out?
No, you, yeah, that, that's already a requirement for the registration, that you have to have a person in, actually, I think we have it in Rock Island County. We want to change it to the surrounding, but that, so for service. So, so basically, you have someone local that is identified as the manager.
The same stipulation that Davenport's, right?
Well, I, I'm not sure if Davenport has that, but that you have that option as far as not taking the class. So like, if you're a property owner, and this would be the same thing here, if, if, let's say, I own a, a sixplex, and, but I don't want to be bothered to, to go to this, this eight-hour class. I could hire a management company, identify them as my management company. Now, they will have had to go through the, the class to be certified to, to do it.
But are you sending, are you just utilizing them just to go to your class, or...
No, they would have to then be the management, and they would be registered with the, with the, the city as my point of contact and...
Yeah, as I referred to my, I call them an agent. So you can have an owner or an agent. The actual owner doesn't have to come. They use an agent or a management company.
So if the council's, oh, sorry, Alderman, Alderman, will you pull your...
Sure. So in, in the phase two, there was an inspection as well. Now, who does that inspection and...
That would be the certified crime-free multi-housing people. So we would have five police officers, and Brad are going to go through the training. So any of us could do that, but probably we'd do a scheduling system, or we would, we would receive the request to go on to phase two, and it would be assigned to one of those certified officers to go out and visit them. And it's not going to be like Brad does with the property maintenance inspection or the rental licensing. It would be geared towards this program on the key things about improving their property from a management and landlord side.
Alderman's.
Is that an exterior-only inspection, or is that a walk-in through tenants' units?
I think there is some going through the units. For example, I know that there's, I haven't been through the training, so I can, I will determine that. But some of it talks about, you know, window locks and safeties, and, and there might be a hundred degree eye peep holes and lighting in front and the back, but I can get that information once the training has been done.
So I'd like to encourage the council to, you know, take this under consideration. If we have enough information, we've got a bunch of stuff to get through tonight. Does everyone have enough information to make a vote on this? So all those in favor of proceeding, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, the second decision to be made concerns if we want to tweak our chronic nuisance ordinance. And this is because Alderman Potter had mentioned, enhancing our inspection process. The inspections are done now for the rental property registry by the fire department. And then that makes its way to Brad and Amy for enforcement through immunities. So by tweaking this, one of the things you add is the number of calls, which are, the chronic nuisance ordinance now already has specific crimes set forth, that if they happen in a number of frequency within a 365-day period, that constitutes a chronic nuisance, and we proceed accordingly. We're not going to tweak that. What we would add, though, are number of calls for the police. And I'll give you an, an algorithm, if you will, an analogy to what we're doing in liquor. The mayor and I have, and the clerk, have been working through some enforcement issues with liquor, where it's about the number of times we're called out there. Might not be that arrests are made, or that, you know, actual sorts of formal action is taken in terms of law enforcement, but five weekends in a row to break up a fight at the same bar brings disciplinary action. And we've stepped that up, and that's been effective. We, we've gotten some better results from our liquor license holders for better security and policing. And one of the elements of the crime-free housing tweak that they recommend is that kind of language that says, in comparison to other parts of the community, if this particular licensed premises is getting a lot of calls, that can be a basis for another inspection. And what that would be, would be another inspection, not only of, of, by fire for the types of property code enforcement things, but also with one of the chief galls officers assigned to this task to do the crime-free inspection. And we'd be able to, in this case, because of the number of calls, work with and determine whether or not it needs to be internal or external, is a judgment call based on whether we're worried about the landlord or the tenant. Because we don't want to punish good tenants for bad landlords, but, you know, if the landlord's using an empty space next to a good tenant, or whatever it is, we'll figure that out in context. But that's the next question for you, is whether you want to tweak your existing chronic nuisance ordinance, which already has specific crimes identified as being triggers for additional inspections. If you want to tweak that to also be about the number of times police are called to the property.
Alderman Parker.
I would be a little bit concerned with that, because I personally get calls from residents, homeowners, who just don't like living next door to a, a tenant. And not that anybody would ever do this, but it certainly wouldn't put past anyone for just making a massive number of calls, be it for, for, for cause or for not for cause. And then that would trigger, just because somebody doesn't like living, doesn't like having a rental property right next to them, you know, it causes a lot of problems for us and maybe problem for the landlord, which isn't legitimate.
Alderman Potter.
Yeah, to echo on that, I mean, you know, is there some way to discern, you know, the, the differing types of calls? I mean, if it's actually for a, something within, because I could even see it in a, a multi-unit, where there would be squabbles between tenants, which really isn't the fault of them.
The language is rather broad, it's about impacting the quality of life in the area. And so if we get a number of these calls where we show up and there's nothing going on, it's the kind of thing where you fold that into whether or not you report that is a determination made by the police officers in real time. We, we trust them with so many other things, I think this would be, with that kind of guidance.
As long as we're trusting them to, to use their best judgment, and not just going straight off a report.
Right. Not automatic.
Yeah, that's...
Alderman Waldron.
Chief, what's your recommendation on this phase? Is it something the police department supports?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think, so when I got here, there was some work being done on this, and there was a lot of recommendation that we needed to do something more with the chronic nuisance ordinance. And it really wasn't impactful. I think Brad probably could comment, there's only been a handful of them that have gone through, it's not used very well, and so we needed to do something better. I think this would be more impactful, likely.
Thank you.
Alderman Moyer.
So I'm not sure how to phrase this, but why, why would we just do this for rental units and not for all properties?
Well, it's the same reason you have a rental registry and not an all properties registry. You're not, it's, the, the reach of government is limited, should be, in terms of constitutional rights. What we're concerned about is the disparate bargaining power between landlords and tenants in multifamily settings. That's why typically you've designed your registry the way you have. If it's owner-occupied, that seems to be more liberty at stake by having to be inspected and rented. So take the owner-occupied ones, which you've accepted from this, you're not going to put that in there, so they're reporting on themselves about how they live their lives. That seems to be overly intrusive. But that's a policy choice. That's not a, it's not a legal either or, it's a pure policy choice.
Are you referring to the whole program, or just the nuisance abatement adjustments?
Well, yeah, so if you're, if you're complaining about, you know, whether it's domestic abuse or some other issue, it seems like if it's a, if it's a rental, you, then you'd have the right to come in there and...
Yeah, but that goes with the license. We don't license somebody in their single-family home.
And, and also, there's always a, a kick here, that there's an administrative hearing officer on the other end to also judge us. This isn't just that we're going to, you know, make a decision. There's a, there's a due process.
There's not a motion on the floor right now. Are there about to be? Okay.
I, I'd like to move that we enhance the, the chronic nuisance as we'll direct staff to enhance it and come back with a recommendation. But I'd also like to see within it, recommendations from staff on reporting to the actual property owners, so the property owners know if these calls are happening on a, on a regular basis as well.
So that is a, not to interrupt you, but that is a mechanism, part of this program, is that there's, and that's the purpose, is to communicate with the landlords, to say, hey, we need your house.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a second, we have a motion from Alderman Went, and a second from Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, so we'll make sure the reporting back to landlords is included in that. Third decision point, the lease addendum. The language is written by them, they'll, they'll come back to you in a form where you can tweak the language. But do we want to make this mandatory? That the leases for the properties that are subject to your registry have to include the lease addendum? And that's an opportunity, as Chief said, to educate your tenants, that they're signing this, it's called out, that's an opportunity for the tenants as well. So we're recommending it, to be clear. Chief and I are recommending this.
Alderman Went.
I move to follow the recommendation of staff.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Went, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Schoolmaker.
So can you give me a little more insight into what that lease addendum says? I know you said it's got versions, but it can be tweaked, and...
Are there any other questions while they're bringing that up?
Alderman Wendt.
I could speak to that a little bit, because I've seen an example of it. It has a lot of language in there regarding that the tenant is aware that if they violate state statute, city ordinance...I have similar language in all of my leases, but it allows to make sure that the enforcement of the crime-free aspect, where the landlord could lose their license and different things, that the tenant knows that violation of this can and will result in eviction.
The benefit to the addendum truly is that if you have multifamily where you have more than one occupant, despite whoever's on the lease as the tenant, that the criminal activities engaged in by somebody who's not the licensed...not the tenant. By having the addendum, the fact that it's permitted to go on is sufficient cause to end the tenancy. That's the benefit of it. The tenant covenants to do all these things. Somebody's continually arrested for, let's say, dealing out of the apartment, but it's not the tenant. We don't have a good clause to end the tenancy. But if you add this kind of language, this helps get to those situations in addition to tenants who do engage in criminal activity.
And some other component of the education is how to have leases, how to have lease addendum, and the eviction process. And I've talked to some people who just don't understand that process. We get people all the time to come on the police department and say, "I want this guy out. I own the place." And they don't understand the landlord-tenant laws and the evictions. And so, I think this will help them.
Is there any...Alderman Moyer?
Yeah, one of the other things that...and this was touched on before, and this will be part of the tweaking, but I would like to make a recommendation when we eventually get into tweaking it, is add some language in there for like resources, for tenants, for domestic violence or those sorts of things, so that they know in there that there's...here's a resource that you can call if you run into that. And that does not count against you underneath this thing. And maybe other resources that tenants may need for assistance in the community from education, as Alderman Berg talked about, or those sorts of things.
Is there any other discussion? Alderman Potter.
Being as this is...will be new to just about everyone in town, except landlords who do something like this now, are we going to have some sort of a tension for the...in the training, making sure that they're...you know, we want to make sure that the tenants know this is what's going to be in their lease. I mean, this is not something that's normal in our community right now. I want to make sure that they understand that.
Yep. They'll be provided with this, and that would be a component of the training. And so, to the point earlier, that's somewhat why it's eight hours.
And also why we're recommending a timeline that goes all the way to the end of 2021 is because we're going to need time to put this in the community and tell people about it, not just landlords, but tenants.
And there also is a provision in the language of the ordinance that says, "This lease addendum," or something similar. Many of you may already have that, but some of you might not have any, or at least at all.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion carries.
All right. And then last but not least, in terms of decisions and guidance tonight to bring back to you, concerns outcomes, the punishment. Right now, we have fines in the chronic nuisance ordinance that work, we understand them in immunities, we do the rest. Our recommendation is to keep that process and tweak it to add the injunctive component, which says, and in some situations, we can seek from the administrative hearing officer an order that says you're subject to additional inspections more than you would normally be because that may keep you on your better behavior. So, that's the tweak we're recommending, is to keep the chronic nuisance enforcement penalties as they are now, as the community understands them, as they've been enforced. But to tweak it to add that one injunctive piece, that we can go on more inspections if the administrative hearing officer feels that we've made the case for it.
Move to accept the recommendation of staff. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wendt and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Berg.
So, what is the...isn't...do we have like a limit of 750 anyhow that we can do or something?
Yeah, that's not...we've never gotten there. We've had multiple things where we've ever gotten there. Sorry, 50?
Oh, that's right.
In the US?
Yeah.
I would probably do.
Yeah. Have we ever gotten to 750, Brad? Has that ever happened?
Not...no.
That range, that 750 comes right out of the statute. And so, lawyers being somewhat lazy are trained to just follow what the legislature gave us power for and leave it to the hearing officer and give him the full range of authority, her or him, to do that. So, that's where the 750 comes from. They're loath to do it. The real point of immunities is compliance, and we use the fines to, you know, give a nudge, to make people do it. So, I don't think we're ever going to get to 750. We have other...you know, the inspections are more of the problem here because that ends a tenancy and a rental income. So, that's likely to get their attention more than...I mean, as you'll hear, we have some properties that have tens of thousands of dollars in fines and all the rest, and we still can't get anybody's attention.
Any other discussion? Alderman Parker.
It just occurred to me, and just...I should have asked this question a long time ago. None of these things that we're instituting now are going to conflict with HUD guidelines for Section 8 housing, are they?
Right. We're aware of that. That is something we want to make sure that we walk the tightrope, so we don't risk any of our HUD grants. And, right, so we're aware of the HUD issues, and we're going to walk the timeline. In some cases, depending on how the ordinance has been implemented and written, HUD has objected. And the Schreiber Institute does encourage HUD to stop giving money to communities that have the offending provisions. We are not going to do...we're not recommending any of the ones that have been found to be offensive by HUD, so.
Alderman's going to be here.
So, will the housing authority fall under these requirements? And so, they're exempt?
Yeah, they're not on the rental registry, I don't think, are they? The housing authority, they're their own.
Yeah, they have their own.
Yeah. This is your rental registry own.
So, anything the Moline Housing Authority owns and operates within the city will not have the same hurdle?
No.
So, we're...we've got to think about that. Are we putting an undue hurdle on landlords that the housing authority doesn't have to? Or does that put a...
Are we sure it doesn't? Because I think there's rental properties that are licensed that get HUD vouchers.
Well, Section 8, but I'm talking about the actual housing authority.
Okay. Alderman.
As a board member on that, I think if when you look at the heat map, which is a really, by the way, really is a cool map, the housing authority of Springbrook, Spring Valley, and Hillside Heights are not a hotbed for crime, criminal activity or calls of service.
Yeah, and I believe that HUD has a pretty good lease, and they don't...over the years, they have stopped tolerating that stuff in those projects. Years ago, there was a problem, but HUD is...or the housing projects are usually pretty good about saying, "You're not welcome here."
Alderman Moyer.
Yeah, and I think if you're talking about the owned and operated places, you're not comparing apples to apples, because, I mean, they're funded by federal funds and we're talking about private owners.
So, it's not showing the housing authority as a rental area, but the...clearly, that's one of the darker areas right there.
Can we make that bigger? Is there a way to make that larger?
Well, if you haven't a four-year history, it's the housing authority.
But these are rental properties in your register.
Right. My point is, it's not...it's...that's housing authority property right there.
Oh. Keep moving it.
Trying to move the target.
Which is not being aided by any of this, it sounds like, and is as gray as the...any, you know, as any other gray area, and pretty large concentration.
Well, it's...for me, the issue is, we can reach out to them and we can do something cooperative, but in terms of constitutional DNA and power, we cannot make them submit to us.
Yeah. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we do. I'm suggesting that we're raising a higher burden on other landlords than an area that's negatively affected there. So, we should at least consider that as we move forward.
Is there any other discussion on this particular consideration? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
All right. So, thank you very much. That concludes the decision-making on the crime-free housing initiative. That one's down.
No, it's not down yet. Alderman Wendt's not done with it.
Real quick question, just as a practical matter. So, if a landlord isn't following through, doesn't wind up taking the class, we've gone through the fines, they don't get their rental license again, but they've got somebody in their property that has a lease, do we do like receivership or how does...
Well, receivership's cost money. We don't have the money to appoint and pay for receivers to take it. What we can do, because it now amounts to an ordinance violation, that they're unlicensed and have a tenant, is that you can proceed for injunctive relief as an ordinance violation to end the tenancy, to bring both parties into court and have an order issued that you're not allowed to rent that property till you comply. So, we would be injunctive relief that way. I know that that's also punishing a tenant who's not going to have a place to live, but the receivership, that would be...the administrative hearing officer can't be the receiver.
Right.
So, you'd have to go to court, get one appointed, have to be paid by a tenant. So, that means money's going to the receiver for their administrative costs that aren't going into a property that's already in trouble. So, while I understand we're trying to balance good tenants and not punish them unfairly, I guess we would take that into account in how we move for injunctive relief. But now, we've got an income stream that's not even going to the property at all, and a receiver who's, you know, it's not their property per se, they just have a very minimal standard to achieve. So, I wouldn't recommend a receivership program. I think we would just use the ordinance to say, "Look, you can't be a landlord and get any income until you come into compliance."
Alderman.
And I appreciate that. I just...I guess I'd like staff to try to find ways, because I don't want the innocent tenant to be adversely affected because they happen to rent from a bad landlord where, you know, they moved in, they're under a lease for a period of time, and now their lease is getting...now, I don't know how that works, and so, maybe Chief Gull talking with the...
Well, it's the same issue we have now for landlords who refuse to register for the rental registry and get a license. We have that same issue now, and that remedy is what we've suggested, which is ending...
Right, okay.
And so, maybe at the end of a lease, we wouldn't throw anybody out early, but we would alert everybody at the end of the lease. So, it's...we'd apply the same remedy we've got now.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. So, in terms of impact on staff, Chief is already, you know, prepared for the police impact within his department. That's good. I just want to remind you, because we're about to now do more things that will directly impact Brad and Amy and the fire department, they get more cases out of this program. There are going to be more that flow through to them and for enforcement. So, just highlighting the impact as we move on to other things.
Before you move on, Dirk, Alderman Parker has a question.
So, I have a question, and the chief is not in here, so...
He's being interviewed.
Chief?
He's being interviewed.
Yes.
There's no more important interview than this. Sorry.
Good point, good point. So, just in going, because I'm looking at the report for, I think it's January for Springbrook, the calls for service. So, this crime heat map, what is the crimes that are included in that?
Yep. So, this is a...the new national incident-based recording system that we're moving to. This will be required next year, the FBI. And so, it's person crimes and property crimes. It's not necessarily just calls. And remember, this is two thousand...this is five years' worth of data.
Okay. Because there's...it's Springbrook last month, there was five calls for service that weren't like directed patrols and, you know, bringing a dog back, you know, things like that.
It's five years of data in one. I mean, we could provide individual months or days or single years, but this is five years of data, right, overlaid atop of...
But I think the clarification is that he's concerned that calls are being tracked, but not calls, they're crimes. And so, returning a dog is not a crime.
But even five in a month in one location.
But for a whole complex?
This is...
Springbrook.
But think about...
Alderman Potter.
Yeah, and I think I could give a little history here in that there used to be a community or a policing facility there, and I'd be willing to bet that if you saw a graph of the reportable crimes in that area now, even with a little shade as compared to 15 years ago or so, it would probably be...
No doubt.
Look like the graph from out of Palatine.
I was just a little confused. I was a little...I just want to be sure we're really, you know, obviously, it's not going to change dramatically, but it just...
It's a much better place.
Want to be sure we're measuring all the right things.
I'm certainly sensitive to the comments that you've had, and by no means are we looking just because you're calling the police for regular service or dog parking or something like that. That's not what we're looking at here. We're looking at what is the nuisance that is affecting the quality of life in our city? What's driving property values down? What is causing crime? We're looking for the problem.
Thank you.
Alderman's going to make her.
That dovetails well in with what I was going to say. So, there's certainly areas where the crime and the apartment buildings don't match up, and I noticed at least a couple of apartment units that are sizable that are missing. And they're not on areas that have any crime. So, is there a way to go about this program that if you...if there is a crime issue in the area, it requires the eight-hour class, and maybe there's an abbreviated training for non...for areas that don't have issues? They're already managing their issues, they're taking care of things. Why do they have to be punished with the lengthy class if they're already taking care of it?
So, you want...you would like an exception?
I'm not necessarily saying an exception. I'm saying, you know, maybe you send out an officer and have a chat with them and say, "Hey, good job. We see a couple other things. Here's a flyer. We'd like you to, you know, to review this and make sure you're doing these things and have a little communication."
Here's why I would not recommend that, because that's where we start to line up with issues of poverty and color in terms of who now has to be trained and who doesn't. And I would rather have it be the mandatory training for everybody who's in the rental market. That's the price of doing business. You have to be in our registry, and you have to do this one eight-hour thing, and you have to do it once, and then you're...it doesn't matter how many properties you have. You own seven, you've done it once, you're good for your all seven. Even if all seven of yours are good, you're not likely to ever be inspected again in terms of a special inspection, any of that. You'll get your rewards that way. But I would recommend that to treat this as a color-blind, poverty-blind issue. Everybody who's in the registry has to get trained.
Are we ready to move forward?
So, and the last piece of this in terms of impact is it's going to impact finance, because we're going to take some of the data out of all of this and transfer it to Livestory so that we can be reporting back to you. That's another one of your initiatives, and that's going to happen. And speaking of data, there's going to be no more important piece of data coming up than the 2020 census.
Transition.
And so, thank you. My English is true there. So, the census is coming up, and there are a couple of things that we think fit this neighborhood revitalization goal, because if we don't get counted, we lose out on money that's essential to helping our community here. And so, there are a number of census initiatives that are coming, and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor in a second, because she's really been guiding these with her group, Make Every Count or...
Complete Count Committee.
Complete Count Committee. So, I'll just turn it over to you.
Well, thanks. So, I passed out a list. Thank you. I only have one slide that JB has. And I don't know if anybody in the audience, I have a few extras. But there are a list of 50 ways that the census...I gave it to JB. He's got some...okay.
I can give you a nod.
Of how, I don't think, you know, it is obvious how impactful a census count is, but it impacts a lot of funding that comes into the community. So, it's very critical that you have an accurate count of all of your people and their situations so that the funding flows appropriately. So, this is just a quick list of 50 ways that census data are used. And like Dirk mentioned, it impacts the distribution, the proportional distribution of over $675 billion annually from the federal funds, and even more in the state funds overall. So, it's critical to us to have the accurate counts, that we're getting the right funding. I'm going to turn it over to JB, and then I have a couple other things I want to share I'm going to turn it over to JB and then I have a couple other things I want to share with the group.
So, go ahead if you would. So this is just an example of what, can you hear me all right? I would project more, JB.
Okay. This is an example of what we're doing just on our website to kind of take from the mayor and the different agencies and their complete count committee efforts and then broadcast that out on our website. And we're going to work in conjunction with the folks at the library because, you know, we got a grant at the library to help communicate the importance of the census. Like the mayor said, that's $670 billion with a B, as Dirk would say. So that's, it's real money and as that, those allocations get distributed and that, it's very, very important that every opportunity that Moline has to get our residents counted is put out in front of them, give them every opportunity they can. So we're going to work in conjunction with them to use these same timelines that the complete count committee is using to make sure people get reminded with the right level of frequency. Then we're going to work in conjunction with the library to do things like at the Touch a Truck event and different ways to expose people to those different reminders. And then one of the other things that the mayor, I think if you go to the next slide, one of the...
No.
Okay, and maybe it didn't get on there. But if you look at that WeCount, we've got that WeCount logo. I had sent a blown-up version of it. I guess we didn't get it on there. But we've got that translated into Spanish and we're going to be putting that out on some of our vehicles that are going to go out throughout town. We travel past 15,800 homes each week in the community and then through East Moline, Silvis and on out to the Upper Rock Island County landfill. And so we're going to use, we're going to use our mobile billboards on the sanitation trucks to help get the word out as well.
And that'll be in both English and Spanish.
Correct, yeah. And have the website, so.
So we've referred to the Complete Count Committee a few times. The Complete Count Committee is based in Moline, our Moline Complete Count Committee, but there's committees all throughout the Quad City area, all throughout the nation. And so what you use those committees for is kind of brainstorming different ideas, how to appropriately interact with your community to make sure that everybody understands the value of participating in the census. And I have my, some Complete Count Committee members here. So if you're on my Complete Count Committee, would you stand up so the council can see you? Thank you very much for your volunteerism. Mike Quinn is also... Mike Quinn and I obviously also serve on the committee as well. But the members of our Complete Count Committee are helping to focus on the areas that are the most difficult to count. So our most difficult to count neighborhood is the Floriscianti neighborhood. Other individuals that are difficult to count are, I'm going to just get a hit a couple of these, young children, racial and ethnic minorities, non-English speakers, low-income persons, persons who distrust government. And so when you see us doing outreach in the community, what we're trying to do is really focus on those groups that are not going to be inclined to count anyway. And so my Complete Count Committee is based on the Moline Community Development Corporation because those are individuals and volunteers in the community that are better connected with some of these groups that we want to focus on. So like JD had mentioned, and that translation to the Spanish is brilliant because that's an area that is very difficult to count. So English, non-English speakers are not as inclined to participate and thus the difficulties with counting in the Floriscianti neighborhood. So that brainchild was actually one of the Moline staffers' brainchild and I think it's going to be used throughout the community. But Sarah Mark had the idea that it would be appropriate to translate that logo to reach the market that we're really looking for. So we have $5,000 set aside in the city budget to support the work that we're going to be doing on this. We also are receiving support through the Day Foundation. So they have already committed to supporting our garbage truck, whatever, marketing to the tune of $500. And so it's nice that we're partnering with the Moline CDC because the Day Foundation is not as inclined to give money to a government as they are to one of their partner nonprofits. And so the money will flow through the Moline CDC and that will support the city's efforts. So it's kind of a nice, nice marriage in that way. Can you back it up just a little bit? I want to just let the council know what the timeline is. So you will start to see in your own homes, postcards coming to your own home to trigger your participation in the census. So the first phase is encouraging people to participate online. This is the first year that the government's done it online and they're looking to take that first wave. You will also receive information on how to participate in a couple other ways, by paper or by phone, but the trick is to go in online. And so like JD mentioned with the library, we'll be partnering with organizations in the community that will give people access to their computers to participate. And so there is an official day that is the official census day, that's April 1st. It's not the finish of it though, because then will be the next wave of trying to compel the people that didn't participate on their own fruition to participate. And so there'll be people knocking on doors and that kind of thing that will happen. Once the census has their count complete in August, they will tally that count and the population counts are sent to the president on December 31st. And then the information that comes from that will start doing their magic, the 50 ways that impact us. And one of the ways is how many representatives we get in the Congress. That kind of work will be going on. So it's very important, I just want to emphasize it, and I want to thank our partners at the Moline CDC for supporting the effort. And that's all we have. Are there any questions about the census? Alderman Berg.
What about, are you planning, are we planning on reaching out to someone that can actually translate that in French as well as we have a big Togo population and I think that would be beneficial as well?
So there are efforts that are specific to our immigrant population and the organizations that lead on that. And so there is work on that. There is also specific efforts for our homeless. So there's all sorts of programming that is established to address those specific needs. I'm not sure, we'll be connecting with those other organizations to make sure that the Moline population is being addressed for those specific issues, though. It's a good, it's a good comment. Is there any other feedback? Alderman Parker?
Kind of piggyback on Alderman Berg's statement there at the Housing Authority. I don't know if you've communicated with members of the Housing Authority to be sure those folks are counted, but that is for probably the largest population of French-speaking and they only speak French. Residents live also at Hillside Heights. Nobody's going to be knocking on the door because you got to be able to get in the door.
Yes.
So we want to be sure we communicate with the Housing Authority to be sure that they're understanding what we're doing and support that. And if you have any problems, let me know.
Great, thank you very much. There are unique initiatives, I just triggered a thought, for people that are in nursing homes as well as people that are in college. And so there's different populations that have different issues at reaching and there's not, it's difficult to count young children. So those kinds of things are also being supplemented through the government, the federal government, but we'll also make sure that we're trying to promote those counts.
Thank you.
And mayor, I was specifically talking about, like you said, that you were going to do that letter, I think the previous slide, in Spanish. Is that correct?
Well, what is...
The logos in Spanish.
Yeah, the logos in Spanish.
Okay, but what about doing that logo in the, in French as well? I mean, I'm not sure why we can't, I mean, truthfully, in the city of Moline, those are, I mean, two very large populations that we have are the Togo, Togoans. I'm not sure what we call them.
Togalese.
Togalese. And I think, I mean, you work with many of those folks and, I mean, through the Housing Authority as well, Alderman Parker, that we, couldn't we do the logo? I know that sounds, I mean, then we're going to, what about, I mean, you know, keep going down the line, but I think because we have such large populations of those two ethnicities.
What is the...
I appreciate that comment and we'll be meeting, our Complete Count Committee will be meeting again and so we can kind of discuss those smaller but yet non-English-speaking groups.
Can you pop that timeline up again one more time?
Thank you.
So, April 1st and we're, so there's probably going to be a newsletter going out to the, all the residents at the Housing Authority. If we get it to them fast enough, they can get that out and then they can understand how they can respond and do it in the various different languages.
Something that the city is doing for us is communicating out on water bills and that type of stuff, just as informational. And so that's a good idea and we'll take that back to the Complete Count Committee. But if any of you know of any organizations that send out literature, including your churches, you know, Boy Scouts, that kind of, those kinds of groups, if you would connect with me, I can provide some information that you could add to anything that you're printing out to the community. Is there anything else? Thank you and thank you for supporting the effort. That's it for that one.
Okay. Next up is single-family rentals and whether they should be added to the rental registry and now the Crime Free Housing Program. And I'm just going to turn this over. That's the choice that is to be made. It's percolating. It's now here to be framed. It's, Alderman went, raised it in the budget and elsewhere, so I'm going to turn it over to him. But this, the choice is about adding it to the rental registry and then everything we're doing with those rentals will apply.
Thank you, Dirk. So I know that I've talked with many of you. It's been a topic of discussion over the years regarding single-family rentals. We've always had a registry within the city for multifamily, but we have a number of single-family rentals in our community. And quite honestly, we don't have a good handle on how many of those there are. The census says that we're about, the city of Moline is about 65% owner-occupied residential in our community, which would leave about 35% rental if that is the correct ratio, which means one in three properties in Moline is a rental. I don't know if that's the exact number. We don't know because we don't have the data. But I do think, having talked, spoken with people in the neighborhoods and residents, that there is some concern regarding single-family rentals. And I come from the standpoint, I own single-family rentals in Moline. I know others here do as well. I don't view this as a punishment in any way. Our neighbors in Rock Island, they register all single-family rentals in their community as well. I think that it is important that we do this to get a handle on what's going on. I'm not necessarily recommending that we, that all of those owners have to enter into the crime-free at this time or have to take classes or those sorts of things, but to start a registry so that we understand what's going on and then have the ability for a little bit of teeth when Brad or his staff or whatever runs into some of those bad landlords or absentee landlords or landlords that are just treating the property as a cash cow and not just sucking money out of the community and not worrying about the neighbors that are in that community, that we have some teeth to take away their license if need be. And so we'll work through that, but I think it is a big undergoing to begin with to get an understanding of how many single-family rentals we have. So I guess my motion would be that we add single-family rentals to the registry like we've historically done it, but not include them in the crime-free housing at this time.
I can second that.
We have a motion from Alderman Witt and a second from Alderman Williams. Discussion, Alderman Potter.
Why would we not want to include them in the crime-free? I got to believe that there's probably just as good a likelihood we'll see the sort of activities that, you know, we're talking about in multifamily dwellings that we would in a single-family dwelling. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't.
Alderman, what's your comment in regards to that?
Uh, no, something different.
Alderman Witt.
I think it's more logistics. I'm not saying never to do it, but I think that if we're talking about 15,000 homes and a third of them are single-family rentals, trying to get that many people through the eight-hour course, I think, having talked with Chief Galt about it, I think that it's going to be a yeoman's effort to get through the multifamily people right now by the end of that deadline. If you wound up throwing another, you know, between 2,000 and 5,000 owners, if, depending on how many there are, that could be a lot of people to get through that eight-hour class. And I don't think we have any understanding on how many of those owners there are out there right now.
Alderman Williams.
I agree to phase that in, but I think we'll probably be surprised at the real number when we get it.
Alderman, Walden.
And I guess that's my question too. With my limited knowledge, isn't it difficult to know where they're at? To even determine what are single-family rentals?
Alderman Witt.
One of the easiest ways is typically the tax bill is not sent to that property. And so that gives you a really good idea of which ones are owner-occupied and which ones are not. Now, that's not for everyone. Some people have other people doing their finances or paying their taxes or those sorts of things. But that's usually a pretty good indication if the, if they've requested that their tax bill. Most landlords don't have that sent to their tenant.
General homestead exemption too.
Yep.
If they have it or don't.
Yep. So there are some ways to get 90% of it figured out.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
I, we've got three nay votes? Is that right? I missed yours, Alderman Potter.
I'm a nay.
Nay vote from Alderman Potter, Alderman Scoobmaker and Alderman Berg. That motion carries. Alderman Witt.
I'd also like, as part of the implementation of this, to direct staff to come back with a recommendation on whether that, we can do this internally or whether we need a third party to do it, what the financing of this looks like. If we could figure out a way to do this as an online registry, all of those things. I think we'd like staff to come back with the recommendations.
Okay, I just, I've asked you to think about impacts. And so here's what we're up against. The staff's been talking about it. We've got to research almost 3,000 properties to find out which ones are tax bills going to somebody else. So let's take your estimate of 3,000. We've got to research 3,000 properties to figure out which ones are single-family and subject to the registry. We have 3,000 more new inspections to do for fire department on top of the ones they're doing already. That's 10 a day, every day, new ones that have to be done. And it's rolling continuously. And then you've got the enforcement for all the ones that aren't there. So we're going to come back to you with how many more personnel, where is it going to come from? We've been looking to say, okay, well, if they do that, how are we going to do it? We don't have an answer. So, and I don't know how you'd outsource just the part of it. And then that doesn't include the crime-free. So that's the, that's why I asked you all along to think about impacts. So we'll come back to you with recommendations, but it's going to be to add people and additional cost. Because there's no way to do that with Brad and Amy.
So how much time do you think you'll need to understand the scope of the impact to staff for this move? Because what I'm thinking is we'll delay our next consideration of it until after we have that information. Alderman Scoobmaker, did you want to say?
Yeah, I think this throws a whole lot of also possible unintended consequences, you know? Grandma's in the nursing home, so granddaughter rents the house. Well, now does grandma have to go to the eight-hour class if we flip this over? Does grandma have, we haven't flipped it over yet, but I'm, you know, that's, that was the discussion. Oh, not yet. We'll do it in, you know, a few years. It just, it just adds a lot of things that you really need to think through because now you're going to add costs because you're going to have to pay for these folks that are going to go out and do inspections. There's another way here. We already have Brad that does inspections. We can give Brad and his department teeth to go out and actually be effective. We don't have to burden the people that are doing a good job. This, again, we're interfering with business commerce here and asking people to volunteer information on their rental property. And if they're not being a problem, why are we, why are we interfering with this issue? It's hard for me to understand why we think we can step into everybody's business.
So I didn't, I'm certainly not, I'm not revisiting the vote. I just wanted, it's going to, we're not going to come back till we have a solution on the manpower thing. We'll look at outsourcing as well because there are some, you know, smaller communities that outsource all of this kind of thing. And so we'll see what we can do in terms of proposals for that in addition to internal staffing and what the impact would be. In terms of the time to do it, we've got a couple other fish to fry, mayor, including the census and the crime-free. So I'm thinking we're looking at late spring, early summer to come back.
So Alderman Walden, did you have something you wanted to say before?
I think if the five of us that are for it should be for it to fund it too for the employees. And I think it would be beneficial to implement it prior to a budget. So that if we're going to implement it, we know going into the next, the next budget that's coming this summer when we start working on it, that we implement it for employee cost at that time.
So the people that are supportive of it, are you comfortable with a timeline of implementation that gives an opportunity for staff to understand the scope of it and come back with a recommendation of how to implement instead of an immediate implementation like the normal process? So would you mind if we delayed the next consideration? So, would you mind if we delayed the next consideration until after we have the additional information? Or do you want to adjust the motion to recognize that we don't have a plan of implementation at this time? Can we delay?
I'm okay with it.
So, can we delay it? Are you all comfortable to delaying it until the beginning of March? Beginning of April? March, April? I'm sorry, beginning of April or May?
I would say end of April, early May would be.
Okay, so the beginning of May, we'll be looking for this agenda item again? Alderman Potter.
I just wanna make, I am supportive of this. I just have a minor disagreement. I think it should be, crime-free should be part of it, so I'll be supportive of it.
We'll let you on the next vote.
Appreciate it. Quick question about the inspections that you said were being done by the fire department. Are those just drive-by? Because I've got a couple multifamily and, you know, it's just.
It's the gradation, as I understand it. So, it begins with the drive, an external, and for multifamily where there's a common area, those get inspected by fire. So, that's the exterior sort of thing. That gets a grade, as I understand, and Brad, you'll correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief. That gets a grade A, B, C. C is failing, so that means it gets re-inspected in the next year. And after two sort of C grades, you get an interior? Is that how it works?
The program was started in two thousand and seven. And so, when it started, all the properties that were registered were inspected and assigned a rating. You were either assigned an A, a B, or a C. If you were assigned an A, then you were on a four-year return inspection schedule. B was two-year, and C is one-year. And if you got a C rating, I believe the rental inspectors would schedule, the rental inspector would schedule an interior inspection at that time. To answer your original question, they were exterior inspections only. And not only, fire, if it was a multifamily apartment building, they would also inspect the common areas and laundry rooms and that type of thing. But no other interior inspections. The purpose of the inspections is to assess or look for property maintenance violations. Make sure that the properties are meeting the minimum property maintenance standards.
Okay, so I guess to the point then, if the person's got a good, they're a good landlord, the property's in good order, the person would drive by, they'd look at it and say, oh, that looks like an A, and we're not gonna come back for four years, basically.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Anything, an A probably wouldn't result in any kind of corrective notice. It would probably result, it would result in a letter saying you're an A property, we'll come back in four years. Anything lower than an A would result in corrective notice and follow-up. That's important, that there's always follow-up in making sure that they actually do what we've asked them to do. And then obviously, a C is a bigger list or more serious violations.
Alderman Scoobmaker.
I just have a comment. It just blows my mind, the irony that we're criminalizing landlords, we're handcuffing a business, and tonight, we're gonna vote to approve cannabis, weed, which is known and proven to increase criminal activity in the areas where it's implemented. I just can't believe that we're doing this. And we aren't criminalizing it, but we're putting all kinds of handcuffs on landlords. We're gonna, it's gonna cost them more, and it's gonna, it creates an obstacle to business. I don't think we're looking at this in a light that we see all of the unintended consequences of what we're talking about.
You know what I hope for? And I'm not saying that we know exactly how this is gonna play out, but I believe that all landlords are not the same quality of landlords.
But they're all being penalized.
Well, I, but I think there will be some benefit to the good landlords, because what will happen is the market will shift. Because if you have.
Small lane in Rock Island where they don't have to pay the fees.
No, that wasn't what I was gonna say. I was gonna suggest that when you have a higher standard of rental properties, then that is good for good landlords, because then they're not competing with low-quality rentals in the area. So, it may prove out to actually be beneficial, but we'll have to see. Uh-oh, Alderman Williams.
You see it as a business. The people that live in these neighborhoods, it's quality of life, because as the mayor said, they're not, all the landlords aren't the same. They have to tolerate the transient neighborhood, the people that come in and out, as do the schools. It weighs heavy on people that have lived in neighborhoods for a long, long time. And in essence, when we're worried about the trappings on the outside of the city, where the meat and potatoes, the gut, the people they make up tend to leave or move on, because things like this happen. And I agree, I'm with you on the weed, absolutely. That's already taken place in these neighborhoods. And it's usually the people that rent that come into a bad neighborhood, they have no pride ownership, that run the neighborhood down, sell their dope and move on, and someone else moves in. It's a constant battle, and this is a tool. So, I think only the good landlords would benefit, and the bad ones will push out. Thank you.
Alderman Witt.
I couldn't agree more. I'm okay with competing against you. I know you're a good landlord. I know that if you've got a rental property next to one of my rental properties, that that's going to be good. Or next to my house, I trust you. But it's the ones that are there that aren't the good landlords, that they are benefiting from the wonderful community that we have, sucking the money out, not putting money back into it, not caring about the neighbors. Those are the people, we have to have some teeth against them. And right now, we've got nothing. We don't even know who they are, or where they are, or how to take care of it. I understand what you're saying. It's not a penalty. It's actually, in the end, I think, will increase the value of your rental properties, increase the value of my rental properties, and most importantly, increase the value of the people who live around it that are owner-occupied, because they aren't gonna have to worry about the issues that Alderman Williams is talking about.
I do appreciate your position, Alderman Scoobmaker. I understand why you're concerned. Are we ready to move on? Are we going to move on to the next item?
Yes.
I would like to take a brief recess. We've been at this for a little over an hour and a half. I'd like to take a five-minute recess, if you wouldn't mind, and then we'll come back. We're about halfway done with the agenda. Recession.
I appreciate your concern.
I know, she's talking, she's like a nurse. Fred driving the truck.
Exactly.
How you doing? Matt, how you doing?
Yeah.
You having yourself?
Randy.
Yeah?
Race bar.
I got a daughter, and my kids are at school now, but now I got a daughter.
How's the knee, Dave?
One of my favorites.
I, you know, I used to watch, I used to watch the girls practice.
Guarantee it is there.
Man, I wish I had.
I can feel them.
Can you see any light in that tunnel?
No. I have an appointment Thursday in the city.
Then you're turning around and Jen. Man, that's what's getting nuts. It's already bad enough, because whenever I'm around my daughter, they're like, they're like, Juliana, your granddad wants you or something. And I'm like.
Dave, I'm gonna start working the mayor now, in case this is a four-four vote again.
It's so harmonious tonight, we're all voting together on stuff for a while. You sit down.
Hey, we're Sonya the mayor. This is the only chance I've got. And I know I'm gonna have a shot.
You never know.
I try. I come back through that area. I have a chief's.
Is that what it is? Don't, whatever.
You can try. I don't know. So, there are two or three more things to talk about. And then there's a public comment section, so we're at, I don't know, I guess we're here now. This has got to be, I guess, I guess I can talk throughout about it.
Yeah, this is a public comment section. A lot of the comments, I just had a few questions. Oh, yeah. Were covered in, maybe I guess them, or, you know, whatever.
It just seemed like when we were talking about all these things, we just don't do this. I was just remembering talking to Scott. I mean, I don't mean to put him in a position that's sensible. We're just saying, we don't do this. And so, I was really surprised the other day, and I made a huge error in going down Fifty-third Street when Scott was letting me. I mean, that was a terrible error on my part, except I saw these signs, these are awesome signs. They're in the LED, very bright, flashing. I mean, they get your attention. Okay. It's just as things come to us, you know, we just say, hey, take a look at, you know, Jane Addams School. They have some of those, you know, that's something similar. So, I can almost remember Scott going, well, you know, we can do this, but we don't really, you know, just paraphrasing here, you know, I was just kind of impressed, we just didn't do that. And it was like, you know, almost investing five years, we were gonna do it. Because I had to say, even to Scott, it's like, well, I know I've seen them on Twenty-Fifth Street in Rock Island, but Twenty-Fifth Street and about Seventeenth Avenue, Sixteenth Avenue, something like that. And it's like, those are really, you know, pretty cool things. And the conversation never went, oh, yeah, we have those over at Jane Addams. We have those over at the Y, whatever it is. So, just as things like that come to us, I really appreciate them. To say, hey, you do this, we do it, we're going for Jane Addams. You know, we should probably be doing it on just as busy a street for, I don't know, what, whatever.
That's my concern.
Well, I would say, and I, so First Street, Washington Junior, Washington. I can imagine it's only.
Sixty-second warning.
So, anyway, just kind of, you know, I guess it's just moving forward is.
That was good.
I know, you're sure of that.
Because I have no opinion of the city.
I wasn't done with my benefit.
You know, so just kind of.
Please stop it. You think it's funny?
I mean, that was really sad. I'm moving to school. I'm working on the campus. I don't think we've. And I'm a hundred percent favorite. It's me, great. So, not upset, it's there, just.
You gave your children that one right there.
No, because that wasn't finally. We're in a resume. We are restarting our agenda with vacant property registry. Dirk Price.
Yes, thank you. So, in terms of segue and transition, this was here after the single-family. In part, we've been working on this, Amy, Brad, and I, since it was passed. We need the program back for the beginning of the year. And all this time, and I'm gonna have Amy come up in a second and talk about it, but so far, we've spent all of the time trying to identify what goes into it. And this will be a similar exercise. So, we have some basis for some data when we come back to you about the effort required to identify properties subject to the regulation. And that's the transition from single families. We're gonna have to do that same exercise. But the choice here is going to be, in light of what we've already decided to do tonight, crime-free housing and adding a single family, and we're back to talking about Brad and Amy again, whether or not you want to outsource this one. And the reason being is that, and Amy will talk about everything she's done, and they're certainly capable of doing it now, but not when we're gonna load their plate up with what we've already decided tonight, and what we're recommending coming down the pike in a couple of items. So, that's the choice, is to whether or not we want to go through the process of requesting proposals to companies that outsource it. And in a number of communities where we've done the vacant property registry, and remember, the point of the vacant property registry is to get an early point of contact for people who aren't keeping up their property, or who are likely not to keep up their property. And it includes commercial, because we've had a number of cases where outlots are empty, or where large, big boxes are empty, and nobody's taking care of the ditch, nobody's cleaning up the landscaping islands. That kind of stuff goes to lower property values. So, Amy's gonna talk about what she's done, but that's the choice, is whether or not we should go through the process of getting proposals. We don't have to accept them till we accept them. But the recommendation is gonna be that we go through the process to solicit proposals at the end. But I'm gonna turn it over to Amy now to talk about what she's done with the vacant property registry so far.
And Amy's gonna turn it over to Brad.
Mayor.
Hi, everyone.
Can I ask one question?
Could we do a quick question, Alderman Parker?
Have we ever considered doing this with interns? You know, a couple of years ago, we had interns down in planning. We had interns at the city clerk's office, we had interns everywhere doing all kinds of really great things. Was there a reason we wouldn't want interns to do this?
Commandant Brown, in fact, I suggested interns for the parking ticket thing, to get a couple interns up here to throw. So, I'm with you on that. But in this case, we're gonna have the interns doing the mining of the data. But when it comes to following through and enforcement, trying to be around and testify. So, I need people who are gonna be able to say, we found this, this is our proof that it's vacant, and you didn't register. And so, for enforcement, I need real people, real.
I agree with you on that.
I have interns, they're not too.
But anything like that, because there does seem to be a lot of menial tasks that, you know, are probably better suited for people that are.
We, we, we've gone to the hard work. Carolyn broke the ice with Allison, suggesting we start looking at interns again. It didn't kill her, I may have struck. So, we're gonna now, we're a couple of interns.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna walk you through kind of what we've done so far to compile our list of vacant properties. So, when we initially began discussing how the vacant property registration ordinance would be implemented, Dirk suggested compiling the list as I came across vacant properties while doing my normal duties and fieldwork as a neighborhood improvement officer. Additionally, we took a look at what we were already doing to track vacant, abandoned, or foreclosed properties. Amy Saunders currently maintains a list of foreclosed properties where the city has been named a defendant in the foreclosure action. We also have a list of properties that we suspect are abandoned that we continually watch and assess on a monthly basis. We ultimately seek solutions for these abandoned properties to ensure they do not continue to be blinding influence in Moline's neighborhoods. The solution that we use most often is state demolition statute. To date, we have acquired twenty-two homes using this process. Two additional homes were brought into compliance by the lenders that appeared in court because of our efforts. Finally, I've added additional properties that I'm aware are vacant that are not on the list mentioned previously. Some have code issues, where I've already been working with property owners. Others are properties. Others are properties that I know to be vacant, that meet the criteria to be registered under the new ordinance. We'll also work with other departments within the city, um, trying to discover vacant properties. And this is gonna be a constantly evolving list. Um, it's what I've already seen, um, working on it, there is just constant change. So, a property may be vacant, and then it may be sold, and, and that type of, of thing. So, that's where we're at, um, so far, and Amy, um, will talk to you about more of the details about what we've, what we've found.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, so I took Brad's list and started a spreadsheet, and there are a total, shorter than he is. Um, there are a total of a hundred and eighteen vacant properties, sixty-five of which are residential, that's what we've compiled so far, and fifty-three are commercial. So far, what, what I have done, um, is first I looked up all the parcel numbers, because that's the identifier that I use to do other research. Then I looked up all the owner's names and addresses and added that to the spreadsheet, so all a hundred and eighteen properties. Then I looked up the property tax status for all a hundred and eighteen properties, and there are currently eighty-seven of those a hundred and eighteen are current on their taxes. Fourteen are one-year tax delinquent, nine are two-years tax delinquent, and eight are three or more years tax delinquent. And that data can, uh, be used for other things, too. I see us using it with the, we, we've already started doing this stuff with the abandoned. This is on a grander scale, so we use this as a tool as well. It's a good indicator of, um, one thing I learned is that it, these numbers are an indicator for, um, how well we have already addressed abandoned properties. And also, it tells me, um, what ones we can focus on this year, next year, um, et cetera, and then prioritize. What I'm still working on as far as gathering data is doing water record searches, um, because eighty-seven are current on taxes, so that wouldn't make them necessarily vacant. Also, I'm check, cross-checking the foreclosure statuses with my foreclosure list, and seeing which ones are still actively foreclosed, and then what the status of the foreclosure is. Um, last week, uh, the fire department, Chief Snyder, gave us a list of their businesses that they inspect each year, um, and which ones are possibly vacant, and so I'm gonna work on cross-checking those as well against my list to see if there's any more we can add. And then, um, the next, the last thing would be to compile a list of mortgage holders from the file foreclosures that we have and other information that we can gather as far as mortgage holders that might have property, um, interests in Moline. So, the proposed process for obtaining compliance, if we continue to handle it in-house, is to put the registration form, which, um, we've prepared, which is modeled very much after the rental housing ordinance, but this would be our form, registration form, that we would put it on our website and on the kiosk. Then I would do letters to the property owners and to the mortgage holders, because there are properties that are owned by individuals that don't have, um, foreclosures on them, and then there's foreclosure cases where we would have to contact the mortgage holders. Then next, the, um, the, as far as them returning them to us, the registration forms and payments would be submitted to finance, much like the rental. And then they would forward the registration forms to me for addition to the registry. And everything on the form here is information that, uh, you wanted on the registry and is in the ordinance, with a few, a couple small additions, um, informational items and such. So, um, you wanted me to mention that we visited with South Elgin. So, um, a couple of us, Janine, myself, and, uh, Chris Kennedy from finance, called, got in contact with a couple of people from the village of South Elgin who have successfully, um, instituted a vacant properties ordinance. And right now, they have forty vacant properties. They only register once a year, and, um, there's no follow-up. And so, I'm sure that we would want to follow up each time there was supposed to be a registry. Also, on ours, uh, on, in our ordinance, it's a graduated fee, so we'll have to figure out a way to put that into novel line, because the first six months is a hundred and fifty dollars. If they have to register for a second set of six months, it goes up to two fifty and increments a one hundred, as you know. And then, of course, the ten percent late fees if they're over thirty days late. So, there's, and then, um, like, a lot of our business licenses are once a year, you renew. And these, this would be, once we establish their six-month deadline, so say they paid today, six months from today, then they would have to pay again if their property was still vacant. Then, once those six months start coming in, not everybody's gonna register on the same day. So, it would end up being a weekly thing, where there would be multiple deadlines that I would have to watch, um, or whomever, um, would have to watch, and so it would be a constant, and then all of the changes. So, um, that's just the things that we foresaw, and, and in visiting with other cities, um, and that's all I had.
So, in talking to South Elgin, South Elgin's not a home rule community. So, they had, uh, limited resources and ability to do things, and couldn't do some of the things you're doing. Brad and Amy both mentioned the constant change, it's already going on with properties that are vacant, that all of a sudden now are occupied, people are moving, and, and so in the midst of figuring out that they're vacant, they're no longer vacant, and that was intentional. That was how you, that's why you put in the six month. You wanted to encourage people with graduated scales of payment to get their places occupied, because that brings about a healthier neighborhood, both in commercial and residential properties, that people are gonna do better if we've got these things occupied and not vacant. That being said, you're doubling, or two-point-five-timing the number of pieces of work compared to other communities. There is no other home rule community that does it every six months. They, they just haven't. And most of the home rule communities, uh, Harwood Heights and others, for example, finally came to the conclusion that they needed their staff to do other things, and they outsourced it, and there are a number of companies that do it, and they do RFPs for it. Uh, and then you, you, you work with them about, this is our ordinance, this is how we want the mine, the, the data mined, who's your point of contact for Brad, or for you, remember, you're on this, too, if you see what may be a vacant property, that they have to go inspect and figure out, and try and do all the research and correlation that Amy's doing now. And so, in light of everything else that's going on, I, I think we should, we're, I'm recommending that we go through that process, solicit proposals, evaluate them, and see if we want to outsource that work.
Motion to go along with staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Wynn. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Wynn.
I, I, I think that it's a good idea to, um, see what that looks like and, and see what we can free up. And, help me a little bit, Amy, the, the water, um, like, how often are we using, using that as one of the determining factors? Because I would think if there's basically no water usage for three months, it's a pretty good indication that, that.
So, I haven't looked at follow-ups yet, so I didn't hear any figures, but yeah. At least, um, like, there's a couple that I know there are no fix on. So, then you know.
I, I would just think that.
It's turned off, it's next year.
Yeah, yeah, ones that.
The water bill's quartered, so.
What?
The water bill's quarterly, so you're, you're not getting a pure month, 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 oh, this is.
Understandable. But if we're doing every six months, you're gonna wind up with a three-month period that there's no usage. Or possibly there's a, it's shut off, or they haven't paid their bill in six months, or, I, I would think that that would be the most heavily correlated, I mean, even, you know, the, the yard not being mowed, you know, the neighbor, sometimes they go over and they mow it because they just don't want to see it while I'm out. But nobody goes into somebody else's house and takes a bath, I would think, so. In a vacant property.
What's happening to the city of Moline right now?
Is there any other discussion on this before we take a vote? All those in favor, even with Alderman Wynn's comments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries.
All right, well, and to continue the abuse of, uh, Brad and Amy, which is apparently my day, the day. So, um, I want to talk about some, uh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that's broken, I'll just put it there for a minute, because Brad's on deck. So, there are some additional tools. We had the audacity to ask Brad, the mayor did, Brad, if you had some additional funding, what else could you do for this goal, if you had some additional funding and maybe a clone?
I'm a fan of Brad.
What's that?
I'm a fan of Brad.
And, and to wish, Brad was, I don't know, uh, disoriented enough to answer with a couple of things. One of them was, uh, that garages, and he'll talk about this one in a second, garages by themselves are a bit of a problem. Some of them are derelict, dilapidated, need to come down, but they aren't eligible for the demolition grants we have to help us with houses. And so, and typically, we're in a situation where the property owner is not able to afford to bring it down. So, one of the things that grant monies were available, he'll talk about that. Uh, and a second one that we'll talk about after that is a roll-off program, where there are people who are willing to provide the labor to bring these down, but really can't afford to, the tipping fee for the couple of dumpsters that have to go to the landfill, maybe that would be something. So, Brad, I'm gonna invite you up here to talk about these possible additional tools. We're actually recommending, as we go through this next discussion about possible funding sources, and if we find funding sources for it, that we implement these things. So, Brad, why don't you come up and talk about the garage one.
Kind of gonna talk about Christmas in February. I wasn't expecting a gift of possibly having any, any funds to work with. And, uh, so I'm, I'm gonna kind of go over two, two potential funding sources. The fees from the vacant property registry shall be used to offset the cost of registration and registration enforcement. And, um, the second thing is for code enforcement and mitigation related to vacant properties. Additionally, there is a possibility the MCDC may have some grant funds available for abatement purposes on blighted properties that are not meeting minimum property maintenance standards within the city. If there's revenue from either program, I would propose using funding from either program to rectify code issues that may not otherwise qualify for the city's existing demolition grants. One such example, um, might be, uh, this blighted structure that is beyond repair at five twelve Twenty Fifth Street. The picture, um, that's on the screen isn't the best, but I guess I'm not tall enough to get a good town view into it, but that whole, um, that whole roof on the north side of the garage is caved in. And then our inspectors, um, in working with this property owner, have been through the rest, and, and really feel like it's just a project, it's, it's just gotten away from this, this person, um, too far. This garage is in very bad shape, as I said, partially collapsed, rough. To date, notices and fines in the amount of thirty-three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars have failed to compel the owner to correct the problems required. Available demolition grant funding is already committed to properties the city's already obtained. There is a possibility that we may look at seeking a demolition order on this property in the event that there are any leftover funds, um, available to cover antici- anticipated demolition cost. The anticipated revenue from this program, or the potential grant assistance that the MCDC may be able to offer, may be an option for this property or similar situations when there is not an available funding source. An additional idea that we have considered for use, um, and Dirk mentioned this, um, for either, um, funding source, we may create a program wherein the city may assist a residential property owner in demolition. By example, if a homeowner has a blighted, single-car garage in need of demolition, the city could use the funds to provide a roll-off dumpster for the work, and pay the dumping fees on the condition that the homeowner provides his own labor through friends, family, et cetera. So, those are our thoughts on, on what we could do with possible income that this program may generate, or if, if funds become available from the MCDC.
Alderman, Walter.
Brad, the only thing that would worry me, are we incurring any liability? Because in some of these garages, there are asbestos. And if we provide the roll-off box, and we haul the tipping fee out, we haul it out and pay for it, are we incurring any liability for that asbestos potential?
When, when we, um, when we do a garage ourselves, um, we do inspect for the presence of asbestos prior to doing any demolition work. We do. That's not a requirement for residential homeowners. It is a requirement, there's different things that trigger that with the EPA. Us, uh, it could be a planning period, it could be urban renewal, it could be those items that trigger it for us, but they're not necessarily triggered by the homeowner.
Thank you.
And the way we would solve that, Alderman, is we would assume that there's asbestos in the tile or the mastic, and so we would get the permit, and as part of the tipping fees, it's that additional expense to hand, treat this hazardous source. So, we would fold that into the program. So, again, the recommendation is if we can find funding sources for it, we'd like you to allow us to implement this, these two programs as matters of policy.
Alderman Wynn.
Let's do them as two different things. I, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we do the, uh, roll-off, uh, program as, uh, suggested here, if we can find the, the funding sources.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wynn, and a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on the roll-off motion, Alderman Wynn?
Yeah, I, I, I like this idea. I think you know the locations and the areas where this will have the biggest bang for, uh, the buck, and I think it's probably a, a, a good investment for the, um, uh, improvement of those, those neighborhoods.
I agree with you, I, I drive the alleys every day, that's what I do. And a lot of times, the homes may, uh, may or may not be in good shape, but generally, a lot of times the home's in okay shape, but these single-car garages have outlived their useful life and, and their, their problem. And, um, sometimes people just like them gone, uh, really like them gone, they just don't have the funds available to do it.
Is there any further discussion on this item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Did you want to do a second one, Alderman Wynn?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move for the, uh, the second regarding the demolition, uh, program that you, you discussed.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wynn, a second by Alderman Parker.
I'm sorry, can I get clarification? I'm sorry, what was that?
It was, uh, the demolition program. So, the other one was the roll-offs, this one's the demolition and, and roll-off takeaway. Alderman Wynn? Oh, yeah, Alderman Wynn.
So, obviously, the cost of, of the demolition would be substantially higher than what the, the roll-off fees and those sorts of things. Would be the idea in those situations, I mean, you know, this person owns thirty-three thousand dollars in fines or whatever, would we wind up then putting a lien on the property so that eventually, when they do sell them? I mean, I'm not looking to, you know, foreclose on these people or whatever, but put a lien that they.
Then stop by and deal with them.
Yeah, and then, that way, the, the residents of Moline aren't bearing the entire burden that there could be, some, some payback.
If, using this garage as, as an example, if, if, there are a couple of different ways we could approach getting it. It is still in bonds, taxes, but it's only a year out, so our normal state demolition statute, we would have to wait a while. We could go obtain a demolition order where we wouldn't necessarily, um, take possession of the property, but we would lean the cost of the demolition against the property, like you said.
Is there anything that we can do that just be collaborative with the homeowner? That, we understand you don't have the money now, we're willing to participate in addressing this issue, and with your agreement, you will reimburse us at that time of sale? Does that work, or would they be like, no, just let it stand?
Well, with a lien in place, they could then, you know, if they pay us back, we can release the lien. So, that's the, the kind of thing where, and we would need their permission to come on and do it. So, then, to your point, Mayor, about working collaboratively to the extent we can, yeah, would love to do it.
Yeah.
Alderman Parker.
Do you ever talk to them about, um, trying to leverage their homeowner's insurance, too, to help put, get a new roof on this or something? I mean, if it's been hail or wind damage, I mean, people get bruised all the time because of that around here.
This, I should add about this particular garage, is, um, just so you know, we started with a different property owner, and then he, he sold it to somebody else that signed paperwork with us and said, I'm gonna fix it, and it just didn't happen, and that's how we ended there. So, this garage, Alderman Potter, I'm sure you can attest to this, it's been in this neighborhood for a long time in bad condition through a series of events, and, um, we're just, um... And we're just, I believe, getting to a point where we need to take this to another level to get a hazard out of the neighborhood.
Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next up, our discussion about, were some choices about how we go about acquiring properties and control. This is the next step up from what we've just been talking about, because here, we're taking control and that means cost. And so we're looking for some direction from council on doing, we're going to outline what we are doing and then look to you for some further direction and also give you some homework. So in terms of the property acquisitions, the key here is that when we take control of a property, sometimes we now have to pay property taxes, sometimes we're in charge of fixing things, making things safe. These are all expenses, and then we may not get them back when it comes time to redevelop or sell the property. That's why this is its own unique category of how we stabilize these neighborhoods. Are we willing to take control? So we're going to start with one, and KJ is going to help us with this one. We have one last project of grant money that was, we call it, you know, Project Growth Grant Money. And it's to do one thing, new construction or demolition leading to new construction for residential. We've been working on this grant for a while, work with Washington Square. So this is the last one to do. We need to find the right lot to either build a new residential structure on or a proper, appropriate property that fits all the criteria to do a demolition or new construction. We might bear the cost of the demolition and then have the grant money pay for the construction. Kind of have to pick between them. What we had done is we had gone and purchased a couple of properties for back taxes from the county. And we don't really don't do that. But this was one of, where these two were presented to us for only a few thousand dollars, you all approved getting them. And our hope was that they would fit the grant parameters. But as it turns out, because of lot size and some other things having to do with the corridor, the, what do you call it?
Census tract?
Census tract. We've decided they aren't a fit, and they'll be something we're talking about at the end of the night about when it comes to partnering with our community partners. So that's what we're looking for. What else do we need to know? It's a missing lot or demolition target, right? So that's one way we acquire the properties is through this grant money. We have one left of those to do. And the two properties, by the way, that we were talking about that we thought would fit but don't are 2301 Sixth Avenue and 3204 15. So just keep those in mind for later. Another way we get control of them is the abandoned buildings. And I'm going to have Amy talk about abandoned buildings here in a second. And the, the benefit of the abandoned buildings is we have minimal costs when we go through the abandoned building. Brad referred to it also as the demolition statute, we don't always have to demolish these things. The abandoned building process yields properties where all liens, other things are wiped out, and our costs of getting control of the property, although there's a waiting period, are more minimal. So I'm going to have Amy walk through the abandoned properties process so you'll understand how that works for us to acquire properties and how it's worked once really well for us so far in the last year.
So we've used this abandoned properties procedure since 2008. We had one that we obtained in 2008 via the demolition statute. And then in 2011, or since mid-2011, we've acquired 21 more via the statute. It's very cost-effective because our only cost besides staff time is the limited title search fee, the cost of serving the defendants, and the recording of the judicial deed at the very end. So taxes are extinguished, property taxes are extinguished via the statute, once we get through all the steps. So the three prongs to, so that we may petition the court to declare the property abandoned is that, one, the property has to be tax delinquent for two or more years, or bills for water service for the property have been outstanding for two or more years. So either one of those or both, if it's both, I put it both in the petition. So we have as much information for the judge as possible. Two, the property is unoccupied by persons legally in possession. And then the third prong is that the property contains a dangerous or unsafe building. So if Brad thinks that we've got all these three things, he'll, we'll, we keep properties on our list. And once they get to these points, then we start and get our information together to put together a petition under the demolition statute and file with Circuit Court. The steps to do that are, first, I order a limited title search. This confirms the owner of the property, it lists any delinquent taxes. Also, that information's on the county website, but this is something that we use as an exhibit on our petition. It lists any mortgages, bankruptcies, liens, judgments, anything that might be an obstacle or anyone with an interest in the property. If there are delinquent taxes, then I have to go to the county and find out who the tax buyers are. And sometimes you could have a different tax buyer for 2017 than you do for 2018, sometimes it's the same. Then we prepare the petition with the various attachments along with supplemental documents, which includes Brad's notices and orders over the time period, which determines how long the property has been dangerous and unsafe, along with photos, along with an affidavit from Brad saying what the current property maintenance code violations are. An affidavit as to any unknown defendants that there might be that we want to serve via publication or any other defendants that we were unable to find. Sometimes it's hard when the person is deceased to find all of the errors. Then, once it's filed, and however many defendants there are, I'll just use our last one. We had eight named defendants for the last one, which was 6107 51st Avenue. That's down adjacent to Moline Soccer Fields. Plus, we have our unknowns, so that's nine total defendants. We have to serve all the defendants with, either personally or to their registered agents. And then the unknowns are served via publication three weeks in a row in the paper. Now, all defendants, once they're served, have 30 days from their date of service in which to file a responsive pleading. So they can say, yes, I want to fight this, or they can say nothing and say, no, I don't. On the published defendants or unknown defendants, the 30 days starts running on the last date of publication. So that one takes a little longer. Usually, we have not yet had an unknown contact us, so that's, that's pretty good. So once all 30-day periods have expired, I set a hearing for an order of abandonment. The order of abandonment sets out all the details of everything we've tried to do to get a hold of these property owners, because it's not, and it shouldn't be, easy to take control of somebody else's property. So we have to prove to the judge what all we've done and everything that we've done to prove all the three of the prongs as well. If the judge sees and no one protests the order of abandonment, then the judge sets a second hearing, which is the judicial deed hearing. And at that time, we again serve all of the defendants with an, with the order of abandonment. It's one last chance to say, hey, this is going to happen. This is your last chance to, to come in and say, I'm interested in this property. Once, once we get to that hearing, if nobody comes, the judge signs the judicial deed. I get it back from the attorney, I record it with the county, and the property's ours. So the last one I'll use as an example, so we had the eight defendants with the unknowns, which makes it nine. We filed it on July 10th of last year, and we, the judicial deed was signed on January 31st. So it's about six months. And it would have been four months, but you have to have every little piece of your attempts to serve to the judge when you go to that order of abandonment hearing, or else he's, they're not going to grant it. And that's the way it should be. But one of the defendants was a company that no longer existed. And so we had to serve them via affidavit with the Secretary of State. But you still have to serve that affidavit upon them with it to the last known address or like if you have the old registered agent's address, because if you go on the Secretary of State's website, it'll tell you it's, who their registered agent was, even if they're no longer a corporation in good standing. So anyway, the certified mailing got lost in the postal system. So I had to work with the postal system, and two months later, we finally got it back and had our final thing to present. So there's just things that happen, like that had never happened before since 2008, but things just happen. So even our best attempts, sometimes you just can't control. So after judicial deed is recorded, then step 10 is to send letters to the county clerk and the county treasurer letting them know that per this demolition statute, all the property taxes are extinguished. That's big, because if we purchase a property outright and there are delinquent taxes or current taxes, we are on the hook for those. And, and then the last thing is I send copies of those letters to property manager Chris Mathias, who then prepares the property tax exemption. And we go along with what we do with the property, which is, in the case of this property, the park board has another property to use for their purposes. So we each have two acquisitions in progress, and since we've got that one, so we're working on those. And those happen to be two of the properties on the vacant properties list that were in the nine that are two years tax delinquent. So.
Alderman, did you have something?
I, I did have a question. What, just curious, what happens to the tax buyers? Are they wiped out? Do they have recourse or?
They are named in the complaint and served. And if they want, if they really want that property, they can answer and come to court and try to fight for it. If not, they file a sale in error. Now, when we first started doing this, the county was a bit...
They get reimbursed.
The county was a bit reluctant because of the tax buyers getting their money back. But on the, so the front end, it looks bad, but on the back end, they've realized that we're getting this property back on the tax rolls, somebody in there to pay the taxes, and it won't go so many years being taxed.
One more, any, any liability if we miss a lien? When you're publishing to unknowns, does that include, you know, a title search sometimes is not, you know, it's not a title policy, there's no insurance on it, it's, something can get missed and does occasionally. Is the unknowns covering that, or it is? Okay, good. Seems like a good process.
Alderman Berg, did you have something?
Yes, I have a question. Why do we wait two years on no water? Why, why wouldn't we just one year? Why would we lose water that long? Why would we go with that for another addition? Pardon me?
Statue.
Oh, statue, okay, good.
So in my short time as your attorney, we've been remarkably successful using this program. And because at any one of these steps, you know, you can see how the rug gets pulled out from under, the clock starts again, right? But of the four recent ones, this has improved your community directly. We've added to a park that's part of a larger process with Moline Soccer, for example, that's going to be put to use as part of a larger plan with the park board. So we've got two unbuildable lots that have gotten the demolition, but we already have people interested in purchasing the property so that they can expand or improve. So we've gone from dilapidated properties to, properties are going to be put back to use by the neighbors, even though they're not buildable. And then the last one of the four was the, the famous building at 1311 Third Street A. And I'm just raising that and previewing that because we're going to talk about that. And that's a real success story, that's a victory lap for y'all, because how that turned out is quite remarkable. And that was a function of this. But I wanted to put all this in front of you so that you recognize that we're extraordinarily fortunate when we get control of properties this way, because even though it's a lot of work by our in-house people, the cost is minimal compared to what we're about to talk about, which is 2312 Fifth Avenue, the Vance property. And I sent you all the memo about this property and where we're at with this. We're not going to get this one from abandoned because he went in and paid the taxes, pulling the rug out from under us. Now, he's missed the last year's taxes, but he's only on one, so it'd be another year. Meanwhile, this is the famous property that throws bricks at its neighbors. It throws bricks at people on Fifth Avenue. And it's throwing them on the roof of its neighbor, and it's unsafe. And we've had an engineer review it for us. And while demolition's an option, it's not the only option. And there might be ways of saving the building and restoring the facade and the brick facade and all the rest. And as you saw in the memo I, I sent you, we have a choice to make here about how we proceed. So we, we've not got the owner's attention, the owner's unresponsive, we've, we've got liens, we can foreclose. That's an expensive and a six-month process. I mean, you've seen everything that the judges are looking for before they take property away from people, and that's what we would be doing. And John Fox, who does it routinely and knows all the judges, is estimating a six-month process for staff. So that's six months where this building continues to throw bricks at its neighbor and at people on Fifth. We put the barricades up, but we don't think that that, you know, down the road is going to be sufficient. So the choices are to try and work with the owner to get the deed in lieu of foreclosure. And if you agree with that process, to get it, you know, with the foreclosure proceeding as a backstop, to try and get this taken care of, well, now we've become the property owner and we need to do something. And our recommendation would be not to demolish it, that's a $50,000-plus hit, but to secure the property with some scaffolding, things to protect the neighboring adjoining property from the bricks, and also protect the people on Fifth Avenue. Put that scaffolding up, work with the neighbor because we'd need their permission. But we'd get it that way, that's a little less money. KJ, the miracle worker, has found something that's a possibility. I don't want to overpromise, underperform, but we think she's unearthed something that's promising that might be in the background, a way to pay for the demolition if we need to get there. But we're not making that promise yet. But our recommendation to you is to see if we can get the deed in lieu of foreclosure and make it secure for pedestrians and the neighbor. And short of that, if not, then to erect the scaffolding at our cost, impose that lien and foreclose on the lien we already have. Because while expensive, this property's got to go. And the advantage for us on both of those is that we know that people have been interested in the property and want to turn it into a parking lot. And we're talking about neighborhood stabilization, and parking lots are not typically what we want to turn as a stable neighborhood into just parking. So by doing either of those, the, if we get the deed in lieu, or if we have to go through the foreclosure process and we, we take it on, we can control what the development of the property looks like. And so, you know, we don't have to entertain the highest proposal, we can entertain one that we think's of better use. So we want to pay more for parking, we don't have to take it. So that's why we're recommending that even though it's going to be a few dollars here, maybe KJ pulls a miracle out of her hat, but, but we think that this is essential part of neighborhood revitalization and we need to, we need to move forward in that way. So that's, you've got our memo, and that's our recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion, Alderman Wynn?
Yeah, I, I'd like to move forward with this, but I just want to make sure for, for clarity, the structural didn't say that it has to come down, right?
Correct.
So it is something that we can save.
Maybe. And that's where we would, I think where the market would help us. If we make it safe from throwing bricks for pedestrians and the neighbor, then when we have ownership and control, we can ask the market, what are you going to do with it? We've got our engineer report, we'll share that with everybody, they can go do their own if they want. And then we'll entertain what proposals. Maybe somebody's got a way to, you know, put up a curtain wall or re-clad this thing in something that is attractive and useful.
Okay, I, if things equal, I'd like to save the building.
Alderman Potter?
Yeah, and, and this area was, was part of the Lakota Study area. And, and, you know, and there's, there's belief that, that this, this could become a vibrant new commercial area around town. So the last thing, in my opinion, we want is some surface parking. We want, if, if, we, we want to encourage some redevelopment that looks, you know, similar to that rather than some sort of suburban look, for lack of a better term.
Alderman Wynn.
You had mentioned kind of in passing earlier, those funds, and maybe this is what you're referring to with KJ, the, the funds with the Washington Square apartment that are kind of parked.
Yeah, the growth funds, the remaining growth funds. So we're not sure if this one would qualify or not.
Oh, okay.
There's a couple of hoops to, to jump through there, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries.
That brings me to my last piece for the night. Yay! The, and that's the what to do with our community partners and that there are opportunities here. Because 2312, I mean, I'm sorry, 1311 Third Street A is a success story, that you should take a victory lap for. This was the one where we got control of the property through the abandoned property program. We held on to it and worked with, and partnered with MCDC to find a right proposal for somebody who was going to rehab it. We then closed on the deal where we sent it... We then closed on the deal where we sent it to them, they, they sold it to the person they selected. And this is the improvement work being done on the property. It's, uh, this is how you stabilize and restore neighborhoods. And so your quest, the, the choices for you, and I'm going to let the mayor talk about this some more, is do we want to pursue more of these where we've got these two properties I mentioned earlier? Do we want to do the same thing where we offer them to MCDC to go find proposals to redo them? And then, once they have that lined up and we agree, we do the closings as we did before, exactly the same thing for two more properties in ten. Um, I think that there's a successful track record there. And then the, um, and as part of working with MCDC on that, they have access to some grant funds that maybe we can use to trickle down for the roll-off program or the demo program. This is the point where I turn it over to the mayor to talk about community partnering with MCDC.
So the Moline, um, Community Development Corporation was established in two thousand eight. And it was established with the understanding there was a funding source that was available that kind of dried up, but they have still done some effective work in our neighborhoods. There's an opportunity for a stronger partnership with them, and this is one of these opportunities. So it makes sense to get these properties away from the city. If you get them back into private hands, they're good at doing that work. I mean, this is exceptional. It, show them the, the next slide is the interior, so you can get a feel for what's happening in that property. It's happening very quickly and it's making a difference in that neighborhood. The advantage is, is the city of Moline took it and is helping to support the Moline Community Development Corporation's work because that property kicked eight thousand dollars into their coffers. Alderman Potter, did you have a question?
Yeah, are, are, are these, is the intent to these become owner-occupied? I'm assuming.
There's no restriction on that.
There's no restriction?
So we, we talked about that at the Moline Development Corporation.
But basically a single family? Um, no?
There's no, I don't, we don't have a restriction on that either. So we're not restricting that. What we're looking for is someone that will, we, when we're turning it over to a private partner, what we're requiring is they bring up, bring it up to code within a certain amount of time. And so this property had probably six code violations. I can't remember, Brad, do you remember on this one?
I don't remember the exact number, but it was extensive. And, um, I, I will say that this rehab contractor intends to turn it into a single family.
So, can I ask mayor? So who's doing the, okay, so we are turning it over to the CDC. The CDC is finding a new owner for it? I don't understand that.
Contractor.
Contractors.
What, on this particular property, what we did was very close partnership with the city. We worked through a request for proposal from different contractors in the community. I think that we had, um, we had a solid response from one contractor. There was interest in multiple contractors, and so Brad assisted us, because it was still in the hands of the city at the time, taking people through the properties so that they understood the situation. They all had a disclosure of what violations were noted, that wasn't a restriction of the violations. And when they provided the proposals, they took into consideration the time restriction of when they would have to flip the property. What the Moline CDC had done in the past was take that property in and make the improvements ourselves. And we did it with volunteer work, and it was quite tedious and very expensive. So what was happening was you were getting the output of something like this, but it was a lot longer timeline and it was a lot more difficult to manage from the CDC's perspective. So we're from, uh, speaking on behalf of the Moline CDC, and I have partners here with me, um, board members, we're quite pleased with this situation. This works well for us. It works well for the neighborhood. And we, as Dirk indicated, there are a couple more properties that we would like for the council to consider the same process for. So if we could flip to the next slide, this next one is, this one is twenty-three oh seven Sixth Avenue. So this is another property that's the same situation. Um, this property, we haven't, the city hasn't seen the inside of it, so this transition would be out a little ways. We would want to make sure that we understood what the situation was with the house before we tried to get some proposal. Otherwise, you'll get it for, you'll get it sold for a dollar. So you, we need to know a little bit more, yes?
I've seen the inside of it.
Well, it's.
There's no bathroom.
It's evolved because.
I looked everywhere, there's no bathroom.
Because there's a.
Tucks down your water bill.
That's an interesting complication.
I don't know what they're doing, but, uh.
It's probably a code violation too, so that'll be addressed. Um, so this is one property that I'd like for the council to consider the same process on.
So mayor, mayor have a question?
Yes.
So then what we would do, when you say we, okay, so I'm, I'm trying to understand we and the CDC. So we, the city, take that property and then we give it to the CDC, the CDC, and then CDC is going to put bids out and have contractors do the work.
So what happens is you, the, this council, what you would be considering this evening, if there's a motion and a second and a vote to approve, you would be considering transitioning ownership over to the Moline CDC with a clawback provision. So if this property is not up to code and on the market and, and, you know, stabilized, then the city gets it back. So there's a certain time that that can happen in. And then within that time, so the CDC would take it, within that time, we would, as the Moline CDC, we would end up identifying the best contractor. And so we take things into consideration like what is their proposal for work? So if one contractor is going to give us five thousand dollars, and one contractor is going to give us six thousand dollars, but the five thousand dollar contractor is going to replace the siding on the house, then that would probably be more attractive. So that's what the CDC decides, is what's the most stabilizing, most beneficial to the neighborhood. They enter into a, a secondary agreement, and that contractor recognizes that there's a clawback provision. And it, we buy ourselves a little bit of room in case the work isn't done for us to rectify it before the city would take it back.
Who's paying for it?
No one.
Who pays for the work?
No one's paying for the work. You are selling the property to a third private entity that is managing the, all of the code violations and the reconstructions, whatever they're proposing. So it's professionals.
So then let's just hypothetically say this property is going to be, the CDC is going to sell it to Went Properties.
Yes.
At the price of five thousand dollars. And then Went Properties pays the CDC five thousand, and then they get to keep it in their budget.
Yeah, and then the Moline CDC benefits from the five thousand dollars. The last property that went up there, the Moline CDC benefited eight thousand dollars. And so that leads into this conversation with what kind of partnerships can we strengthen with the city to help the city support some of their work? Like I mentioned earlier, the grant that came from the Day Foundation goes to the Moline CDC, but it supplements our five thousand dollars that we had set aside for our budget for the census. So there's all sorts of collaborative work, like we get grants that would, would be qualifying grants for the kind of work that Brad is doing, even though the federal grants aren't. So there's all that kind of collaborative effort. Did you want to say something?
Are you, are you looking for a motion tonight?
I am looking for a motion.
Do you want both included in that? Do you want to talk about the other one first?
Well, let's just do them separately if you don't mind, because they'll flow separately.
Okay, so I would make the motion that we move to.
Follow the same process as before for the property at.
To be conveyed.
Twenty-three oh seven.
Twenty-three oh seven, Sixth Avenue.
Sixth Avenue.
To be conveyed to the CDC, Moline CDC, MCDC.
So it follows the same transition as the thirteen eleven.
It's got the double clawback provisions, all that stuff.
Yeah, but this property, this particular property is twenty-three oh seven Sixth Avenue. So you have a motion? That's a motion. Motion from Alderman Schoemaker, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion? Alderman Potter?
Yeah, my, um, I think this is a good model. My concern is, I'm hoping that the CDC recognizes that what we don't want to create is, um, you know, um, giving this property to someone, cutting it up into small units and, and that sort of thing. We want, we want to encourage, it doesn't necessarily have to be owner-occupied, doesn't necessarily have to be single family, but, you know, something that's definitely going to improve the neighborhood and, and, and that sort of thing.
So in their proposals, they're, they're quite specific about the work that they're going to do. Are they going to cut down trees? Are they going to replace windows? That kind of stuff is all defined in the proposal. And so we definitely take that into consideration. We had a long conversation about whether, how important it was for it to be owner-occupied. And really, if you want a professional to do this flip, that really restricts you on the market. So I think that we felt comfortable that it wouldn't necessarily have to be not a rental. Um, so just to take advantage of the, the, I don't, I'm sure there's a more dignified name for them, the flippers.
Rehab for resale.
Rehab for resale, yeah. The rehabbers. Is there any further discussion on this one? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Dirk, can you give me the next picture? The next property is at thirty-two oh four Fifteenth Street C. This property Brad has been in, and it looks pretty promising. So, same situation. I'd be entertaining a motion. The property address is thirty-two oh four Fifteenth Street C.
It's right next to Prospect Park.
Any motion? No motion?
Motion to follow the same guidelines with this property.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. And we have a second from Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this particular property? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Um, so that, that kind of, um, that kind of closes out our discussion about the Moline CDC, other than, you know, in talking to Dirk, there are some more opportunities for us to kind of enhance our collaborative work that hasn't been exercised in the past. And so we'll be moving in that direction and bringing the council, council's discretion along with it as we do that. So I don't have anything else. We do have some Moline CDC representatives here though. Would you like to address the council? Do you have anything you want to share? You don't have to. Bill's moving.
On the specific topic or general?
Just Moline CDC in general, the relationship with the city, if you see any opportunities to help us, because we have quite a common interest in neighborhood stabilization.
Okay, so, so I'm Bill Abel with Stevens Parkview Neighborhood Group. Uh, been with the Moline CDC now for four years, secretary for three. Uh, we really appreciate the support that we get from the city. Frankly, a lot of what we're doing, we could not do it without your help. And we fully, uh, have enjoyed supporting, uh, the efforts of the city. Obviously, a nonprofit group, we can do things the city by itself can't do. Uh, echoing, uh, just reflecting back off a few things that have happened here tonight, Alderman Potter, I can think about scraping floors and things like that over on Twenty-Fifth Street. That was about the last house, I think, where we were sort of self-styled Habitat for Humanity and, you know, it got great owners following in there. But as Dick knows, or Alderman Potter, uh, that's a long process. And frankly, I don't care if I ever scrub another floor.
I'll fix another window.
And the windows, nice job. Uh, so that's one thought. Anyway, we do appreciate the support, uh, in, in the CDC area. I'll reflect back to, uh, uh, a few things before that. Chief Galt, uh, as a member of Stevens Park Neighborhood, I, I fully appreciate all the services the city has to offer, and that goes all the way from public works through planning, through the fire department, through the police department. We're especially enamored at Stevens Park with the police department. And more, even a little more drilling down, a little further, community-oriented policing over the last few years, great support from, uh, your team. And even a little further, unfortunately, he's not here, but I talked to him before he left, who I called Sergeant Rea, now Lieutenant Rea. When we called, he answered. I'm telling you what, Sergeant Rea, Lieutenant Rea, there's nobody that I've found that is more responsive than Lieutenant Rea. And, uh, we had three bad boys in the neighborhood, and after a summer of harassing them, uh, they are gone.
He didn't mean that.
Encouraging.
We encourage.
Coaching.
Coaching.
Partnering.
Neighbors can harass, the police just encourage. So, uh, anyway, thank you so much for all that help, chief. Uh, lastly, and I'll make this one more point, Stevens Parkview, uh, former home to Alderman Waldron until he got uppity and moved out. Uh, it was, really, a lot, that's a long time ago too. Uh, was basically single-family homes right from the beginning, uh, just a wonderful neighborhood. I live there today, I've been there for forty years. I cannot think that we have a lot of multifamily housing units in that neighborhood, uh, you know. Mostly, these are a lot of homes where, yeah, grandma may have gone to the rest home, and, uh, I, I'm encouraged, I, I support Alderman, Alderman's once motion that you have approved to register single families. And I realize you try to do a lot with little, and to try to bring that into your crime initiative, crime initiative, could take some time. But at least, speaking on behalf of Stevens Parkview Neighborhood, I do support that, uh, effort on your part to register those people. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. I appreciate it. And thank you to the Moline CDC for all it does. It's all volunteers, we have one part-time administration person, but it's a lot of effort in the neighborhoods connecting with people that are, the focus is low to moderate income neighborhoods, and so they do a really great job. So thank you very much. Um, that's it. Do you want to, do you have any closing remarks for us, Dirk, or are we done? Okay. We have one more. Sorry, we're going to, now we're going to open up for public comment. Come on up, public comment. All you need to do is share your name.
Yes, my name's Todd Bender. I live in the We like District. First of all, I'd like to thank Brad, the chief, um, Amy, KJ, off, oh, excuse me, Officer, Detective William, excuse me, Alderman Williams, and Alderman Wett. They're really good when we needed help in our neighborhood with any kind of issues, they're very good. I'm going to be all over the place, I didn't plan on speaking, so I apologize if I'm all over the place. I reiterate what this gentleman said about the single housing, um, crime thing. In the last two years, we've had two shootings, two houses down from me, and a single house dwelling that was rented. I have a granddaughter that lives across the street from me, she would not come out of the house and go in the front yard for about a week or two. She was so scared, it happened two nights in a row. You guys might have remembered, right on Fifteenth Street A. About eight months ago, the hostage area, or the hostage situation was a single area. That was right across the alley from me. I go out to take the garbage and the gentleman, excuse me, a policewoman, if I correct, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, um, stopped me and said I cannot even go out my back gate because I had a hostage situation. That was a single dwelling. So I really encourage you guys to put that single house under the criminal thing. I think that'd be a good thing. And I'm just going, and then, um, there's another comment made about some of the neighbors just calling on neighbors. I've never seen that. Um, my wife and I started, my wife started it back in two thousand and three, the We Like. And a lot of neighbors call us about the people. And that, I've never seen them calling unless, we just want good neighbors. It's usually the duplexes calling on each other for loud music, or they took my parking place in the driveway or something like that. That's what I hear most likely. We just want good neighbors. I, I can't see any of my neighbors just calling to call people. We, we're good people, we wouldn't do that. And, let me see, I'm going to remember, but it's going by comments I heard. And then you gentlemen, Kevin Schoemaker, Alderman Schoemaker, I understand that it is a business, and I don't downgrade you for that. It's, it's part of the American way, having a business, no matter how you want to make money. But if you're making money, keep your houses up. Keep them up. And Brad does a wonderful job. Brad does a great job, but his hands are tied a little bit. I taught Brad, I must send Brad fifty pictures a week of stuff. And there's some stuff he can do and there's some stuff he can't do. So, I just want to say, too, you guys did, bless you. You guys did a lot of good things today. You guys voted a lot, I just hope it's not too little, too late. Because I know in the big, the, um. Anyway.
The crime initiative?
Thank you. He, he talked about the big cities. Those big cities, I know those big cities up in Chicago, they're concentrated in the apartment complex. And they probably called word down and they did a lot of good things there. But our problem is in the residential areas. If you looked at them, Matt, excuse me, that whole section along I seventy-four is residential. It's all older homes. It's very, we love our older homes, there's a lot of us that could move from them older homes. You don't know how many times I hear that, because neighbors do come to Janet and I. And we want to stay in our older homes. But it's hard to stay in there when we don't have no restrictions of what we can do or what Brad can do about tenants, too. And there's a lot of good, a lot of good, uh, tenants out there. In fact, the other day, I stopped a gentleman, he was moving out. I shook his hand and, and he's a young kid, like twenty-five years old. And I told him, thank you very much for being a good tenant, we appreciate that. He even appreciated me coming to him. But, let's get these guys on the same app. And I'm saying, all the landlords, there's good landlords and there's good tenants, but there are also other bad landlords and bad tenants. And thank you very much for your comments, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Is there anyone else like to address the council?
Tom Schwartz. I'm born and raised here in Moline. Uh, I have rentals here in Moline, that's where I intend on staying. I just had a few things that, over the course of the night, I wanted you to think about. I'm not looking for answers right now. Uh, if implemented, uh, based on the crime-free housing program with the Moline Police Department, be helping with background checks. Uh, since there is a fee associated with the program, I don't know if other cities, like, uh, was it Palatine? I didn't know if they offered that. Um, if the addendum is broken, uh, which I already have it in, uh, if you break the law, you're out. Uh, if it's broken, does the city, uh, does the city provide the eviction process? Because if you've ever had to evict anyone, that's quite a process. It's not like you just go down to the courthouse and they say, oh, yeah, here you go, get him out. Once landlord is certified, does each house have to be inspected or certified? Or is the landlord then blanketed to implement the program to his or her own properties at that point? Or does every, everyone have to be inspected? Wasn't sure. And, um, on that also, uh, is there gonna be a verification for an accredited property management company? Uh, not just John Doe taking care of the properties? Uh, because if we have to go as a landlord or owner to the property, I guess I feel like a management company should have to have some kind of proof that they're legitimate. You know, if, if Jim Johnson in Chicago owns five properties here, ten properties, and he says, you know, Don Jones is my representative, who's Don Jones? You know, is he legit, or is he just a guy that lives in Davenport that's coming over to take care of the properties? That's all I have.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Are there any other pub, public comments this evening? Hearing no more public comments, we are gonna close out of the committee of the hall and go into the council agenda and will there be, Alderman Schoonmaker? Um, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance and an invocation by Alderman Schoonmaker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to work together, uh, for the betterment of Moline, voicing our different opinions and, uh, working for the collective good of the community.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Potter.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Schoonmaker.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Berg.
Present.
Your honor, I request approval of committee of the hall in council meeting minutes of February fourth, two thousand twenty, and appointment made during committee of the hall on February eleventh, two thousand twenty. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty oh three dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six police of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-six dash twenty-three eighteen, Uniforms, subsection B, to authorize the chief of police sole responsibility for decisions pertaining to Moline police personnel uniforms, with the exception of the uniform allowance set annually by the city council, and ratifying all prior actions of the chief of police Darren Galt pertaining to Moline police personnel uniforms. Council Bill forty oh two dash twenty twenty, an ordinance, a special ordinance providing for financing by the city of Moline, Illinois, for the Water Main and Tiff Number Seven Airport Business Park by authorizing issuance of two hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars in a revenue anticipation note and purchase of the same by the Water Fund of the City of Moline, Illinois, appropriating monies for said purposes and authorizing execution of any related documents. Council Bill forty oh three dash twenty twenty, a special ordinance provided for financing by the city of Moline, Illinois, for the Sewer Main and Tiff Number Seven Airport Business Park by authorizing issuance of three hundred and fifty thousand seventy-seven dollars in revenue anticipation note and purchase of same by the Water Pollution Control Fund of the City of Moline, Illinois, appropriating monies for said purposes and authorizing execution of any related documents. Resolutions. Council Bill ten ten dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Miller Trucking and Excavating for project number thirteen thirty-three, twenty twenty trenchless Water Main project in the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand eight dollars. Council Bill ten eleven dash twenty twenty, a resolution ratifying the approval of policy agreement with United Healthcare Insurance Company to provide a fully insured prescription drug plan for Medicare-eligible retirees and retirees independent, I'm sorry, retirees dependents for a one-year period commencing January first, two thousand eighteen, and a one-year renewal period commencing January first, two thousand nineteen, and authorizing the human resources manager to formally execute the policy agreement. Council Bill ten twelve dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement with Federal Signal Corporation for the purchase and installation of equipment for the upfitting of twenty-one, twenty-twenty Ford Police Interceptor Utility Units in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty oh four dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting one new Division Eight adult-use cannabis businesses and by amending table thirty-five dash twenty-two hundred point one pertaining to non-administrative development review by adding special use permit adult-use cannabis to the table's list of procedures. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Do we have a vote on this one?
I didn't see it, Elizabeth.
Yeah, there should be a vote on this one. Was it not in the, sorry, maybe I forgot the vote box on the agenda.
I just thought maybe it was reading, but it's second reading and so it's the final vote.
Sorry, it is second reading, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Motion to approve thirty forty twenty twenty. Second. Thirty oh four twenty twenty.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker.
Nay.
Waldron.
Nay.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Nay.
Five ayes, three nays.
That motion carries.
First reading ordinances. Council Bill forty oh four dash twenty twenty, special ordinance vacating a one thousand one hundred square foot plating, dr, platted drainage and utility easement at sixty forty-one Thirty-Fourth Avenue and sixty fifty-three Thirty-Fourth Avenue, Moline. Council Bill forty oh five dash twenty twenty, a special ordinance amending, special ordinance number forty thirty-four dash twenty eighteen and forty oh one dash twenty nineteen for financing by the city of Moline, Illinois, by revising the issuance state principal and source of funding for the revenue anticipation note and purchase of same by the Water Pollution Control Fund of the City of Moline, Illinois, appropriating monies for said purposes and authorizing execution of any related documents. And that is all I have this evening.
Thanks, Janine.
Thank you.
Do we have any council business this evening, Alderman Williams side? Oh, oh, what, what could it be, Alderman Parker?
On the heels of a five-game winning streak, the Augustanians basketball team plays tomorrow night, probably the biggest game in C C I W, um, history this year, against North Central.
History this year.
Against North Central, the winner takes the, uh, the conference title lead, or at least co-lead. And so, it's gonna be co-lead, because Augustans probably gonna win. And so, uh, it starts at seven o'clock at the Carver Center. And if you're not able to make it tomorrow night, because I understand, we're all busy. Pardon me?
Are they still up there?
Uh, they've lost the last few games. Yeah, so they're, they're in third place.
Someone's engaging in your.
You know what, it's awesome, finally I get some, but all these Augustanians graduates back there that won't even go to the games.
Don't encourage them.
Allison.
Don't encourage them.
Wow. Yeah, so, uh, and if you're not able to make it tomorrow night, don't worry. They still, they'll, they play on Saturday as well, and then the final home game. Your, your pain is coming to a quick end. The final home regular season game is a week from Saturday.
Thank you, Alderman Parker.
But then we have tournament time.
Any other business?